Good afternoon, everybody. Good afternoon and welcome. It's good to be here on this Tuesday afternoon and welcome. It is Tuesday, April 12th, 2022. It is 4:30 PM. We're going to go ahead and call this meeting to order. Thank you to Dr. Stubblefield, all of our board members, my board colleagues, staff, and anyone, all guests who are present with us in person and/or via Zoom. Welcome and thanks for joining us this afternoon. So we're going to go ahead and start our meeting as we do at every board meeting. We'll read our board norms and protocols. As a board, we agree to respect the differences of opinions in making decisions for the district, to follow best practices in managing the superintendent and the management of the board itself, to stay on task when conducting business for the district, including while at board meetings, to never surprise the superintendent or each other when conducting official business of the district, to read these norms at the beginning of each board meeting and at board workshops as a reminder of how to conduct our meetings, and to continually self-check to determine if we are following our norms when conducting district business. And with that, before I do the roll call, just a reminder to please make sure that your laptops and cell phones are put on silent or vibrant. And also, just a reminder to anyone speaking today, including guests and/or staff or board, please make sure that we keep our masks on fully and do not remove them even when you are speaking. Thank you. With that, Ms. Smith, would you please do a roll call?
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, present.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, present.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, present.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, present.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, present.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, present.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, present.
Thank you.
Great, thank you, Ms. Smith. All right, now I would actually move to amend today's agenda, board. Hopefully you should have received notice. There were a couple of items that were mistakenly deleted from the agenda today, but they are on there. We've seen them before, so I am moving to add the two items that are marked as new on the agenda. For your reference, it's item number eight, items E and F, to add those two items, and to move item seven, to swap board agenda item seven with board agenda item 10. So 10 will now become seven, and seven will now become 10. So I would move to make those adjustments for today's agenda. Is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions? Yes, Dr. Nguyen.
What was the first thing you moved?
So there were a couple of items that were accidentally deleted on the agenda, but that we were on there previously, that we have been brought forward to the board. So items on agenda number eight, item E and F, that are marked new. They're not new, they're just so that I knew which ones needed to be added.
Mr. Lopez, could you state what they are, please?
Yes, so item, item agenda eight, E is the purchase of independent reading books for elementary and middle school students. And the second item is letter F under item agenda eight, which is to accept the bid for mechanical upgrades at Eisenhower Middle School and FL Schlegel High School. So we're adding those to the agenda and then swapping the other two. Yes, Dr. Nguyen.
Would you like to make a substitute motion to add another item? Finance committee.
We can, yes, a substitute motion.
I'm making a substitute motion to add finance committee to, where appropriate.
Board discussion, would that be okay?
Okay, so that would be number 10.
Correct.
So number C, like cat, under item number 10, board discussion, is then finance committee.
Great, thank you. So there is a substitute motion on the floor to add finance committee under board discussion, item C. Is there a second?
Second.
Seconded. Any further questions? Okay, hearing none. Ms. Smith, just for clarification, the substitute motion, just so we're all on the same page, substitute motion is to add the finance committee discussion under board discussion as item letter C on the agenda today, in addition to the other changes that were, that were made. And there's a motion and a second. Any further questions or discussion? Okay, seeing and hearing none. Ms. Smith, please do a roll call.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you so much, everybody, and sorry about that confusion. Hopefully everyone at home is following along just fine. All right, now I would entertain a motion to approve today's amended agenda.
Moved. Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Questions or discussion? Seeing none. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion carries. All right, we're going to jump right into our agenda. First up, I would entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss matters of non-elected personnel in order to protect the privacy interests of the parties involved under a coma for 25 minutes going in at 4:40.
Moved. Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or discussion? Okay, seeing none. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Just one moment. Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Okay, we'll be back in 25 minutes. Thank you.[576.32]
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith.
Elonda Clark.
Elonda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries. Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you.
Thank you. We're back in open session. Motion to return to extend executive session for 15 minutes.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Thank you. Ms. Smith.
Elonda Clark.
Elonda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries. Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to return to open session.
So moved, seconded.
Moved and seconded. Ms. Smith, roll call please.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew. Janie Humphries. Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen. Thank you.
Thank you. Back in open session. Motion to extend executive session for 10 minutes going in at 5:23.
So moved, seconded.
Moved and seconded. Ms. Smith.
Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew. Janie Humphries. Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page. Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Turn to open session, please.
So moved.
Sorry, sorry, one more time. Motion to return to open session, please.
So moved.
Seconded.
Moved and seconded. Ms. Smith?
Londa Clark.
Londa Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
All right, thank you. We are back in open session. We will continue with our agenda. So first, next on our agenda, we have our community comment. And just a reminder, community comment is open to anyone who would like to address the board. You are limited to three minutes. Please sign up with the board clerk no later than the Monday before the board meeting at noon. And when you come to the microphone, please make sure you state your name and make sure that the board clerk does have your contact information for the board role. And you don't have to state that in public, but make sure the board clerk has that information. Tonight, we do have one person signed up for community comment, so I would ask for Ms. Leila Hauser, and I apologize if I mispronounced your name. Please come to the mic. And again, you have three minutes. And just a reminder to all of our guests and staff to please make sure we keep our masks on. Thank you. Good afternoon.
Good afternoon. Good evening, actually.
Good evening.
And you said my name correctly.
Thank you.
All right. My name is Leila Hauser, and I am a speech and language pathologist at Morse Early Childhood Center. I have been working for this district for nearly 20 years, and I would like to thank Dr. Stubblefield and the board for this opportunity to speak this evening. There are two things I would like to address briefly. One, the mask policy. And two, current and future concerns regarding the special education program at the early childhood level. First, I have spent over a year now attempting to provide speech and language intervention to the best of my ability through a clear mask. I am tired of doing it and done pretending that it is working. Our preschool staff is doing their best to teach letter and sound identification with their mouths completely hidden behind a mask. I have discovered it is nearly impossible to teach the foundations of learning with a mask covering your face. In the past, I would have told you that the masks were aggravating, awkward, uncomfortable, and even annoying. Now, I find them to be simply exhausting. I am completely taxed, both professionally and personally, by our current mask policy. I believe we are the last or one of the last school districts remaining in the Kansas City metro still requiring masks to be worn indoors. Governor Kelly has stated her plan to declare COVID-19 as endemic in the state of Kansas, and I am asking that you please give serious consideration to discontinuing the mask requirement and permit masks to be optional for students and staff effective immediately. And second, and much closer to my heart, is the state of affairs in the early childhood special education program. I wanted to stand here before you to tell you in person that our program as we know it is unraveling. I fear the reality of our situation has not been brought to your attention, and I feel you, more than anyone else, may have the ability to change this trajectory. We are doing our best and still feel as though we are drowning. We have sounded the alarm but feel utterly ignored. We need your help. We need you to intervene on our behalf, but more importantly, on the behalf of our students. We invite each of you to come visit our building and see firsthand what is happening within our walls. And we welcome conversation anytime you are available. Please help us to inspire excellence for every grown-up, every child, every day, because today, excellence did not happen, and it is not likely to occur tomorrow either unless you act quickly to restore our program. Thank you for your time. I'm happy to answer any questions you may have now or in the future.
Thank you, Ms. Hauser. And the Chief of Staff's office will follow up with anyone who gives community comment. So as typical and per policy, we don't typically have questions now, but we thank you for coming forward and for sharing your concerns with us. So thank you for coming with us today.
Thank you.
But you should be hearing from the Chief of Staff Office this week.
Thank you.
Thank you. Next on our agenda, we will hear from our Superintendent of Schools, Dr. Anna Stubblefield.
Good evening. I just have a couple of things to share this evening. First, I want to remind everyone of our upcoming Boundary Evaluation Meeting on April 13th, that is tomorrow. We need your feedback on the two proposed boundary concepts focused on the capacity challenges at Wellborn and New Chelsea Elementary, as well as Colby Bruce Middle School. Community input will be considered for the district's final decision. If you can't come in person, there are surveys available online on our website under the heading of Boundary Committee Meeting on the banner that goes across the top. We really do want to hear from, and we have reached out directly to families in these attendance area, so that we can make an informed decision, the board can make an informed decision based off the information that comes through the Boundary Committee. The second thing I want to remind everyone is, we encourage parents and students to enroll in our Extended Learning Summer Program. The deadline is quickly approaching. Incoming kindergarten students will be engaged in four exciting weeks along the thematic units focusing on key literacy, math skills, integration of science, social studies, physical development, STEM and strategies for social emotional development. Students will finish the summer with a jump start for kindergarten as well. Elementary students will have the opportunity to engage in science, technology, engineering, and projects-based learning opportunities to round out a fun, full day of learning and integrated arts opportunities. We have various programs for our middle, high school, and special education students. Please visit the district's website or contact your principal to get more information. Thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Stubblefield. Just a few items from me. First, I do just want to recognize, many of you probably knew him, the passing of, the sudden passing of Henado Ruiz, who was a community champion, more so on the Missouri side, but in the Kansas City region, who passed suddenly at the age of 48 this past a couple of weeks ago. And he was just a champion for community, for people, and for doing good, and just wanted to honor him and as he passed suddenly a couple of weeks ago. He was a great mentor and a great friend of mine as well, and just wanted to honor him and pray for him and his family as they suffer this loss. In that similar notion, I do just want to thank Dr. Stubblefield and my board colleagues and staff for all of your thoughts and prayers and for you reaching out and for allowing me space to step away as my father passed a few weeks ago as well. And so just, I really do appreciate everyone's thoughts and prayers and reaching out. And so I just wanted to say thank you publicly to all of you for your support, and I am very blessed to have that and your friendship. So thank you. Board members, don't forget Friday, we do have a budget meeting at 1:00 p.m., so that should be on your calendars. If it's not, please make sure. And that will be via Zoom. The agenda will go live tomorrow. At the latest, you should be getting an email with some information regarding that budget meeting. We'll also cover a few policies as well, so make sure that you pay attention to your email for information on Friday's meeting at 1:00 p.m. on Zoom. And then lastly, just to wrap up, I do just want to give a shout out to all of those students who received scholarships through the Hispanic Development Fund. Really proud of KCK, as Kansas City, Kansas had the most scholars who received scholarships through HDF in the metro area. We had 58 students who received scholarships, and when you total in the partner and matching schools, that's a total of $127,200 in scholarship awards for those 58 HDF scholars. And a special shout out to Wyandotte High School, who had 26 scholars in their building, which was the highest in all of the metro area. Summer Academy was close behind with 25, and then we had a few from J.C. Harmon and Washington High School as well. So just congratulations to all of our scholars as you continue on in your academic life. So with that, I will end and allow to see if there are any comments from board members. Ms. Drew?
Just like to say, I appreciate being able to be given the opportunity to attend the NSBA Conference in San Diego, April the 2nd through the 4th. I really was engaging in sitting and listening to various individuals to learn much more as a board member, what I can do to make things better. I was impressed with the presentation made by Damon John, who is founder and CEO of FUBU and a star in the Shark Tank series. Also, learning a little bit about proximity learning, but also how we can address equity and trauma in our schools. It was very informative, and I had an opportunity to meet several people from different states and understand what the process can be as a board member. And again, I just formally want to say thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Drew. Dr. Nguyen?
We may as well make our rounds. Go ahead.
I will, I'll just echo what Ms. Drew has stated as well. Had lots of good times, met a lot of good people, lots of good information was passed along. I also want to recognize our paraprofessionals. So last week was a time for, it was National Paraprofessional Day, and so I just want to make sure that we call out and recognize and appreciate them for all that they do.
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. Likewise, this is now the second opportunity that I've had to attend a national conference. First one, the Equity Symposium in DC, and this, the National School Board Association in San Diego. The good news throughout all of that is that the national president is now from Kansas, Ryan Henderson, who is the board member at Seaman. So we have a little bit more connection, plus John Heim, the former executive CEO of KSB, is now that executive director. So we have a presence on the national scale. But what I would ask Mr. President and other board members is that we have sometimes set aside to actually share the proposals, the, one of the last sessions I attended on Sunday morning at 8:00, which was a screwed up time for the presenters, but it was about an African-American academy in Bakersfield where there are 80% Latino, but only 8% African-American, and that it was open to everybody. And once again, it was about student achievement. And so it makes no sense, in my opinion, for us to go anyplace, if it's across the street, not be able to come back and see if we can fit it, we can adjust it, if we can make it work for our students. So that's my ask. The second comment is that, I mentioned this to Mr. Lopez, when we start this budget process, it again is an enhanced process from last year with a needs assessment. And the added component to Senate Bill 362, the House version of 2567, is that the board must consider what it takes and how long it's going to take to get students from one, Level 2, to Level 3, and that it has to be done in a public board meeting, it has to be documented, and it has to be thoughtfully designed. And that's not an easy task, and that's a very time-consuming task. So laser version, we better clear our calendars. So thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Nguyen. Ms. Page?
Yes, I too would also like to thank the board and the community for supporting us and allowing us to go to the conference in San Diego. They had some phenomenal classes, and my only regret is that I wish we had more time. I got a chance to attend the STEM Saves the World, Engage Your Students, Why Diversity Matters, Tired of School Improvement Strategies That Don't Yield Results, and the list goes on. They were all excellent, and we have a new school in the 21st century, and we got to catch up to the 21st century and make sure our schools matter for our kids. I also got a chance, two weeks ago, to attend a conference in Baltimore, Maryland, which was a retreat for Black women educators. And while there, they too, it could have been for, it didn't have to have a particular race, but the whole process was about those who were involved in education, be it the teacher, the administrator, if you're in the cafeteria, whatever. We got to take care of ourselves, under a lot of stress. And they had doctors, social workers, psychiatrists, yoga teachers, Zoom. They did whatever they could do to teach you how to relax, how to care for yourself. And I did recruit. I worked hard, pleading, trying to tell them how we have such a phenomenal school district. And with them, we could also make it even better. So it was something, and I think it's something that we could do for our educators, as well as anyone who works for the school system. We got to teach everybody how to care for themselves. It's a stressful job, but we can do it, but we got to know how to take care of ourselves as well as the kids. So I thank everyone for that opportunity. And I also participated with the teacher negotiation. Hopefully, our goal is to try to have this resolved before the school year ends. So that's what we're trying to do.
Thank you very much, Ms. Page. Ms. Russell?
Now, it wouldn't be kind if I didn't join my counterparts in also saying thank you. And it was a pleasure to represent the school district, as well as to network with our fellow board members and superintendent in San Diego. I will say that one of the biggest takeaways for me during the conference was the mindful, the mindfulness portion of it. I think it is important, as we talk about social emotional learning and all of the things that we are expecting in the classroom as it relates, that we as adults remember that we also need those moments. And so I would like to suggest and discuss this in a planning meeting or wherever, the opportunity for us as a board and staff during our board meetings to, at some point, either before it's the break option or when we return back from break, to incorporate that within our board meetings. These are, these can sometimes be very stressful moments, and so just reminding ourselves that we owe it to ourselves to also take a moment out and rest and pause, even if it's 30 seconds. I will also say that my by far favorite keynote was Damon John, and I will finish my thoughts with this. You're going to fail, but you're going to grow in the process. I think that speaks volumes to our district and the opportunity that we have to grow in this moment, but recognizing that there are things we have not done well, there are things that we could have done better, but we have lots of opportunity in front of us. And so I will take that quote from him during his speech and keep it with me.
That's awesome. Thank you so much, Ms. Russell, for sharing. Okay. Next on our agenda, we'll hear a library report from Ms. Carol Levers.
Good evening, board.
Good evening. Good evening. Ms. Levers, if you wouldn't mind keeping your mask up, please. Thank you so much.
It's coming on, yeah, but not on the screen. It's on the screen, yeah. Okay. Sorry. Thank you. We're going to share again the statistics for March and report to you. I don't have to go through the whole thing. You've already seen that. I'll just highlight that West is, again, the top checkout for our curbside, 17,363 items for the month of March. So the total checkouts were 39,666, and we've placed 5,100 holds. And of course, our eCommunity, we've had our reading entertainment and our database searches, 16,000. In March, we had 18,686 searches. And our services for the same month, it gives you between March 22, February, and March 21, just to give you an idea that you could see where we at. Last year, we had 11,000, and this year, we, I mean, sorry, March, last year was 11,274, and this year is 11,232. So it's all kind of the same, not much difference because of our eCommunity. Our statistics, one of the principals asked me if we could put the school statistics on as well, but, you know, instead of having 40 schools, we'll just put them elementary, middle, and high school. And you could see our checkouts for elementary print was 27,354. And the total elementary with the digitals, 29,116. Go down the list to our high schools. We are struggling with our high school to check out more items, but the total for March was 33,140 items were checked out in the schools. We had Terry McMillan. People were excited and waited a long time, two years, every time we had to cancel, but everybody was happy because they received, people in Kansas City, Kansas received a copy of her book. We had people from as far as Nigeria checking in, as well as South Africa, so people were excited about that. And now, we went to Manhattan, and I have one of my staff members with me that I want to introduce to you, who received the KAC or KC Award for Excellence in Conservation and Environmental Education under government. Ms. Jada? I'm going to just read the little note that her coworker nominated her sent to the board. So Jada Tressler is an education specialist at the Wyandotte County Lake Park, and that's our Mr. and Mrs. Ephraim Schlegel Library. Jessica Lawrence, who is the manager there, the former manager, she said, "I have been Jada's manager for the almost four years she has been employed at the Mr. and Mrs. Ephraim Schlegel Library. Jada is very passionate, not only about the subjects she teaches, but also about the community that she serves. Jada has developed and implemented so many programs for us over the years that it's impossible to list them all. For example, just summer camp alone, she has to develop enough activities to entertain campers every day for weeks, for five hours a day. Her activities incorporate a lot of time out in nature, because we all know how little these kids can get, just be in the natural world." One of Jada's specialties is in One of Jada's specialties is incorporating technology for program delivery or enhancement, which became extremely important when COVID turned the world of education upside down. She and all of the public library staff developed educational videos for a lot of their most popular schools and homeschool programs that were sent to teachers to use in their classrooms and libraries or for parents to use at home. For the public, she developed many educational videos relating to nature and animals, including two American Sign Language videos, which received some of the most views of any of the library videos. Jada's technology contribution don't stop at making videos. She creates and contributes weekly content for Schlegel's library blog and social media accounts. One of her most viewed posts to date, and actually holds the record for most likes out of any library post, was her post about persimmon seeds and winter weather predictability. The post received over one million views and shares and was shared all over the world. Jada helps F.L. Schlegel Library maintain collaboration and partnerships with other similar organizations and facilities in the KC metro area. She contributes and participates with members in the interpretive site coalition. She takes professional developments very seriously to keep up on current topics in education. She just recently completed all the project workshop virtually through KC. Jada moved to Kansas from Missouri, but she's still involved with the Missouri Environmental Education Association and serves in the group to plan their state conference. In her short five years in the field of environmental education, Jada has made such a huge impact on so many people. Her passion, innovative ideas, and dedication to the field are already evident, and we look forward to seeing what is next for her, as Jessica Lawrence noted. Jada's leadership in the field of environmental education will inspire and create that spark in others to gain an appreciation and love for the natural world. For all the many contributions Jada has already made, KC is pleased to present Jada with this award."
I won't take up too much of your time, but thank you, Carol, for letting me come here to let you guys know that the organization, Kansas Association of Conservation and Environmental Education, or KC for short, was kind enough to honor me with this award. This is the first professional award I've ever received. And to feel that recognition from within a like-minded community is truly life-giving, especially, as we all know, education can be a somewhat isolating experience. And especially in the world of conservation and environmental education, we're left to do things on our own. But whenever I got to go receive this award and meet people who have the same goals and aspirations and challenges that I do at my site, I was able to return back to the Schlegel Library with a renewed vigor to continue to serve the kids in KCK. Whether they want to come out for a nature program or not, I am there to help them create that connection with their community and help them understand that they have more, more at stake with the natural world than they may realize. So, thank you again for letting me come and share this with you, and I appreciate working with you guys on the future.
Thank you, Ms. Tressler. We'll invite you up for a quick picture. Moved to approve the report for the Kansas City, Kansas Public Libraries.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Elonda Clark. Elonda Clark.
Elonda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Again, congratulations for that recognition. Thank you, Carol. Next on our agenda, I'm sorry, did you have, I'm sorry, Ms. Russell.
Yeah, I just had a couple of questions for Dr., for Ms. Levers. And I was trying to catch you before you got to that part. Is the library operating at its normal operating hours, levels, opportunity? And then, has the building committee gotten together for a meeting? And did you get the request for professional titles with regard to those individuals serving on that committee?
Okay, there's a couple of questions. First of all, was the?
So, is the, how is the, what are the operating hours of the library? Is it back to normal?
No, it's not back to normal yet. We, but we still offering curbside, but we have open. We have Monday through Friday, nine to seven. And we have, sorry, not Friday, Monday to Thursday, nine to seven. And Fridays, nine to five. Saturdays, nine to five. And we haven't opened Sundays yet. We're just thinking of, depending on what's happening with the mask, you know, we're working closely with the board and also with the Health Department to see where we're going with this so that we can decide whether we're going to open for normal hours. We've also lost a lot of staff members, so it's, we have kind of, we have not staffing problems really because this, we don't have to employ too many part-timers because part-timers usually, they want to work at night because of students and, you know, Sundays and weekends. So, it's the continued timetable during COVID that we're still maintaining. We just opened recently. Well, the library was in operation, unlike the schools. We didn't, we didn't work remotely. We worked from our buildings, even though the libraries weren't open, but all staff came into our buildings. We never closed. To do what we had to do, like we explained, you know, do videos for schools, for school-going children, homeschools, for everybody. We did it from the library, from the building library. Sorry, she had two more.
What's wrong with her question? Do you check with the Health Department?
No.
Weekly? Or how, who do you get your information?
We get it from the board, you know. We follow board.
So, I guess, what is it that you need from us? With summer approaching, constituents have mentioned that there is a 30-minute limitation for how long you can be in the library. Is that still?
No, that's, no. It has long, you know.
So, that has disappeared, but you're not operating at normal operation?
Exactly. Up to seven o'clock instead of nine o'clock, yes, that's the only. And Sundays is the only one.
So, what would you need from us in order for that, for us to, for the library to run normally?
First of all, we're waiting for the next steps as far as, you know, mask mandates.
I guess I don't understand why you need, what mask and operating hours have to do with each other. I'm just trying to.
If I may intervene, we voted on that a while ago. So, that's where, that's where she's speaking from, is that it's something that we decided as a board, I don't know, a year ago maybe? So, that's where.
So, as long as there is a mask mandate, the library can't open in its full capacity?
We voted on the alternate, on the alternate schedule.
Okay. And the second part of my question was building committee. Has it met yet? And then, I had requested that the professional titles of those serving on the committee.
That I sent to you the same week when you asked? I send it? I mean, I sent it to Leslie to send it to you? Actually, I sent it without the titles, and then you report back that you needed the titles of everybody that's on the, which.
I will follow up because I don't have it, but.
It was the same day that, when you requested that, that I sent it.
So, we'll follow up to make sure we get that appropriate information that's been requested. I know that the list of people were sent out, but the titles of those individuals may not have been. So, we'll, we'll verify to make sure that that list and the titles of those folks have been sent out.
Anything else?
Any other questions? And I'm sorry, I missed your questions, Ms. Russell. Sorry. I'm a little out of practice here. So, thank you, Ms. Levers. Next on the agenda would entertain a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda.
Mr. Lopez, I'd like to set aside item G, like Green.
Okay, thank you. Would entertain a motion to approve tonight's consent agenda minus item G.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions? Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Elonda Clark.
Elonda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. So, we will bring up item G next. Dr. Nguyen, did you have a specific question? And I'll invite Dr. Estrella to the microphone.
Yeah, and I just have one question. I see the breakdown of students attending. Just what was the total amount spent for '21, '22?
Total amount spent? I don't have that figure for you. I don't, I think we're still being billed according to the billing schedule that was in the contract. I do have Don Grossitier, who is the director of.
Well, you can always send it back to us. So, thank you.
Absolutely.
Thank you. Any other questions for Dr. Estrella? Ms. Page?
According to this, we're going to go with them again?
For any, so prior to last year, we've always had a partnership with Green Bush for our Reach 500 students. So, and that's for credit recovery in order to make sure that they can graduate with students who have some different challenges. And based off KSDE, that's our only, because we didn't submit to establish a virtual school ourselves, that that's a larger load. So, for those families who may want to continue with a virtual education, Green Bush would be our only option to do. And then, we can internally explore if that continues to be a request, if we want to manage that ourselves and financially to see what it takes outside of that. So, yes, we are continuing with them, and we are getting interest, to see what the interest is for family. But beyond, if no family chooses to continue a virtual education, we still will have an agreement for our Reach 500 students that we've had for several years, correct? Yeah.
Well, I have a question. You know, I'm looking at your percentages and scores, and so, do you guys reevaluate? How do we get these up? Because when you look at it, it's, it's not, I don't mean any harm. It's okay. I'll just say that. How do we make this better?
Yeah, and I do, I do believe that, and again, we do have Don Grossitier, who's the director of Green Bush Virtual Academy, who could speak. But I do know that they have some planned improvements, especially around interventions. They're going to add some additional interventionist to their staff. They are moving to a new student management system that will help with that, with the tracking and those sorts of things. So, they do, they do have some planned improvements for next few years.
And I apologize. I didn't ask you that before. But is it possible to get a copy of what you plan to do to make it better? Because we always want to do better.
Yes, absolutely.
And it's not all you. There's different layers. But how can your organization help us? And what are your suggestions? And what are you going to do? Can we get a copy of that?
Yeah, absolutely. And just, you know, I work for KC KPS, and we partner with Green Bush Virtual Academy. And I will work for them to get that for you, absolutely.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Thank you. Any other questions for? Thank you. Is there a motion to approve the renewal of the MOU with Green Bush Virtual Academy Southeast Kansas Education Service Center?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Further questions? Hearing and seeing none, Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Elonda Clark.
Elonda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries.
Janie Humphries, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Motion is approved. Thank you. Next on our, on our agenda, we will have an overview. I would invite Dr., let's see, Campbell, Lisa Walker? Thank you. To get a KISA overview on our academic and discipline data. Good afternoon, good evening, Ms. Walker.
Good evening, Board.
Good evening.
All right. Board President Lopez, Vice President Clark, board members, Dr. Stubblefield. I am Lisa Walker, Executive Director of Federal Programs. And Dr. Campbell, Matt Anderson, and I have been working alongside a large group of district and building team members to coordinate the district's KISA accreditation efforts. And I am here tonight to give you an update on that process. KISA is the Kansas Education System for Accreditation, and it is a five-year cycle in which all districts in the state of Kansas participate. Each year in the cycle, districts respond to a set of questions, and that results in an annual report that documents then the district's efforts and our progress. At the end of the five-year cycle, the district's progress over that entire cycle is reviewed by the Accreditation Review Council, or we call them the ARC. And the ARC makes a determination then on whether a district is accredited, conditionally accredited, or unaccredited. So, you see on the screen that we are in Year Four, Part Two. The state allowed districts to pause and continue with an additional year in whatever year they were in in the cycle due to the COVID pandemic. So, we are finishing up Year Four, and then next year at this time, we'll be moving into our accreditation determination. In addition to the annual report, districts participate in a review with the outside visitation team, or we call them the OVT. So, we are in the final preparations of getting ready for that visit, which is scheduled for next Wednesday, April the 20th, 2022. All of you received a copy of the OVT agenda, and you can see that it's a pretty tightly structured day where we will have an opportunity to show the great work that's been occurring in the district from our students and our staff. We will be starting the day at Wyandotte and Mark Twain so that our OVT will have an opportunity to see firsthand some of the systems-level work that we've been putting in place for Tier One core academic and SEL instruction, as well as some of the activities we've been doing to have college and career preparedness to strengthen our student outcomes. Then, we'll return to central office, and we will have an opportunity then for outcome leaders to share highlights of the work that's been occurring in each of the five outcome areas. So, we would invite you to coordinate your schedules for whenever you're available. If you'd like to sit in and listen in on those conversations between the KISA leadership team from KC KPS and our OVT team, we would welcome you to listen in and also to hear the input from the OVT at the end of the day. You can see that our OVT is made up of educational practitioners from around districts in the state of Kansas, as well as for some state and national educational organizations. Each of those OVT members completed the KISA OVT training. And so, you can also see that they represent some of the larger districts in several that have similar demographics to KC KPS. And we were advised by KSDE, KISA officials, as well as our OVT chair, to really consider trying to get individuals on the team that really understood then some of the challenges and the opportunities that we have as an urban district. In the KISA accreditation process, all districts are required to address the five outcome areas, and you see those there on the screen. And so, we will be addressing those in the report that you got, as well as in our visit. Additionally, districts are asked to select two of the evidence-based practices to focus on. And so, at the start of our KISA cycle, KC KPS did choose relationships and relevance. And so, those continue to be the two overarching goals that we will work on throughout our five-year cycle. You have a full report, but at a glance on the screen, you can see our relationships goal that focuses on our SEL factors and growth, as well as culture and climate for the district. Then, you see that's followed by our relevance goal. Then you see that's followed by our relevance goal, which focuses more on academic instruction and college and career preparedness. And then as I scroll through the screens for each of the five outcome areas, you'll see the results owners identified. Of course, those were included in your year four report as well. Those are the leaders who are really coordinating all the work in each of those areas. You'll also notice that on each screen, we have several champions. These are individuals who are coming from buildings, and they'll be sharing firsthand with the OVT the impact of some of the systems-level work that we've been doing, how that is transferring to classroom practices, and how it is getting all the way down to positively impacting the students' desk. And then on this screen, you'll see the first three pages of the year four report, which I'm sure you recognize. That middle document identifies the KISA leadership team, as well as many team members who are supporting each of the outcome areas. These individuals listed on this document have planned, implemented, supported, and monitored the work that's occurring in each of the outcome areas, as well as contributed to writing the year four report, which you have received, and also which the OVT received, which is customary prior to our visit. So now I will stop there and pause for a moment to answer any questions you might have regarding the KISA process before I turn it over to Dr. Campbell to share district data.
Thank you, Ms. Walker. Questions, Ms. Drew?
I don't have any questions. I just wanted to let you know, I took the time to read through everything. It was excellently prepared. Everything was so detailed in making sure that there was a clear understanding of what our staff has been doing. And I just wanted to publicly say thank you.
Thank you.
You and everyone else who was involved.
The team appreciates that, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russell.
I just want to echo Ms. Drew's comments. I am not, I have not gotten to the overachiever method of reading all of the report. But as I was sharing with Dr. Campbell, I appreciated the honesty and the transparency. We have been through transition that is so beautifully but eloquently and so honestly displayed in that report of recognizing those areas where we have not struggled, but we have continued to try and gain steam. And I believe that that is how we get to our further goal, is recognizing all of those. So while negative is not always fun, in this moment, I want to say that I truly appreciate the honest and transparent feedback in the first 12 pages that I have read of that document. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Page.
Usually, how long does it take them to get back to you? When do you get your assessment back?
That's a great question. They will provide us some feedback that day, from 2:30 to 3:30. They'll ask questions of our team, and then they'll provide feedback based on their two-hour work session after we've done our site visit and our presentations. And then the OVT chair will follow up with a written report. And we generally get that about two to three weeks after the visit, and that is sent to us. And then it's also filed by our OVT chair on the Kansas State Department of Education KISA portal. So it'll actually be filed in that authentic application.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Walker.
Thank you.
All right, good evening, Dr. Stubblefield, President Lopez, Vice President Clark, Board members and participating staff and audience.
Good evening.
We're gonna wait to upload, I'm going to keep going. As we wait for our presentation to come up on our screen, our time with you is going to entail providing a collective overview from our fall and winter academic and disciplinary data, while discussing some baseline data around new initiatives and support as we work towards a trajectory of great student success academically, behaviorally, socially, and emotionally.
While they're waiting, I just wanted to add, our intentions was to provide this data on a quarterly basis, and this is just transparency for the audience. But we did have a change in personnel. And so we currently have staff working to pull this data that was not in DERA. So moving forward, we plan to give a quarterly update around this type of data. But we did have some transition in staffing. And then in regards to the KISA visit, the feedback that the OVT team will give from 2:30 to 3:30, if the board wants to hear that firsthand, to hear the questions, or any staff member, you are welcome. But that is, that will not be an opportunity for you to, like, dialogue with them. It will be afterwards, if we need to schedule time with the board to talk through that. But it really is time for that team to give feedback for the staff, and the staff to ask clarifying questions. So I, if it works for your schedule, I do encourage you to come and hear, because then you can hear directly what they're saying and any follow-up. We can reach out to the team and get that information.
Thank you, Dr. Stubblefield. So the district has worked intentionally this year to narrow our focus and align our focus around the sphere of influence, starting with our KISA goals that was just kind of shared and outlined with you. Then our district strategic plan, to our school improvement plans utilizing the multi-tier system of supports, as you can see from the visual here. Research states that systemic change does not take place overnight, but outlining and implementing a model of collective efficacy will impact collective outcomes towards a trajectory of success for students and staff. Therefore, today's team consisting, is gonna consist of our Director of Curriculum and Instruction, Darcy Swan, District Athletic Director, Tammy Romstad, Director of MTSS, Matt Anderson, Director of Diploma Plus, DeNira Fernandez Flores, and Director of Student Services, Lisa Garcia Stewart. And they will share information outlined around the three areas, academic data, college readiness, attendance, attendance and discipline data, in comparison to our fall outcome data, as well as some new baseline data programs and support initiated during our second semester for our 21, 22 school year.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Good evening.
As you know, the FastBridge universal screener screens students in the foundational components in both reading and math, and assists in determining a student's individual skill gaps. In kindergarten and first grade, the early reading assessment assesses such discrete skills as letter naming, letter sounds, initial sounds, just to name a few. Our first data point this evening is the percent of students scoring with high risk, some risk, or low risk. And you can see those percentages at the bottom of the graph. Due to the fact that our fall FastBridge screener didn't require first-grade students to take a subtest entitled Sentence Reading, as it isn't required by KSDE, our first graders didn't receive a composite score during the first benchmark period, but by winter, that specific subtest isn't needed by FastBridge to generate that benchmark score. So our first graders received a composite, which is reflected in our winter data. That also explains why the number of students assessed is different from fall to winter. And we assessed all kinders and first graders, but without a composite in the fall, our fall student number count for first grade appears a little low. So that just explains that number of students screened on your, on your slide, and why there's a little bit of a discrepancy from fall to winter. A-reading is the adaptive component of the FastBridge assessment, and assesses the broad reading ability of students, taking into considerations those five big pillars in reading. Notable on this slide is that we had a slight increase in the percent of students scoring at college pathway. Again, this assessment is considering a student's risk level when it comes to reading, and it does give teachers and administrators and district staff a prediction as to whether students are on track to be grade-level readers. Statistically, our student data by ethnicity is stagnant from fall to winter when observing the low-risk and college pathway categories, with a decrease in our smaller subgroups of American Indian and Native Hawaiian. As we consider the instructional implications of this data, it is apparent that we are in need of leveraging our newly adopted literacy resources at the early childhood and elementary levels. We will be implementing those this fall in conjunction with the implementation of letters, which provides us teaching pedagogy and instructional strategies for teaching those foundational reading skills. Currently, we have 808 elementary staff and 111 early childhood staff engaging in letters training. When comparing the end-of-unit assessments to the initial, the initial pre-test data that the staff takes prior to the beginning of the units, our data indicate that teachers are learning and retaining information presented in the assigned letters units at close to a 90% to 95% rate of learning for our elementary staff. Most staff have completed units one and two, with some outliers already working on unit three. Though unit three is where we will pick up this fall to complete the next three units as we go into the 22, 23 school year. The FastBridge early math assessment assesses foundational math concepts for our early learners. The district data for kindergarten shows a decline from fall to winter in the category of low risk, with increases in some risk and high-risk categories. This indicates a need to examine our math instruction, particularly at the kindergarten level. And much like the reading data, FastBridge will alert our system when we have issues with tier-one core instruction. So this is definitely something on our radar. Our A-math assessment, much like the reading assessment, is adaptive and provides broad math ability to predict future math achievement. This data shows a decrease in the percent of students scoring low risk and beyond from our fall to winter benchmarks. Again, this assessment provides risk predictions as to whether students are on track for grade-level proficiency in mathematics. While data trends by ethnicity indicate that across the board, we have been decreasing in performance by most subgroups, our expectation is that by continuing to increase literacy across the district with a focus on creating an MTSS framework for reading, math, and SEL, we will begin to see our data trends turn a quarter, turn a corner, and have an upward climb, particularly with the focus on instruction and the student experience in the classroom. And lastly, DigiCoach is that instructional lens. It is our coaching tool for principals and district staff to use when conducting classroom walkthroughs. DigiCoach provides a matrix of universal teaching strategies, often observed in high-functioning classrooms. During third quarter, we spent time calibrating around the matrix, look fours, and the DigiCoach tool with our principal teams. To date, we have approximately 2,322 total walkthroughs. And as we continue more walkthroughs, over time, our instructional data will provide a snapshot of instructional strengths and challenges that can be addressed through professional learning and our professional learning communities at the site level. And that concludes this portion of our academic review.
Mr. President, can I ask a question?
Dr. Nguyen, yes, please.
First, Dr. Stubblefield, moving forward, could we have, I see the pages are numbered, so, but it didn't come out on some of them. But you seem to have missed the slide about grade. The E-reading and the E-A-math on grade, you didn't cover that. Could you make some comments on that one, that slide?
Yes, so you can see one of the slides that we didn't go ahead and put in our presentation tonight because of time. We knew that you had that slide, so we figured if you had any questions, you would ask those. That slide that shows you by grade is really a snapshot from fall to winter, how our students are maybe, if you think about it, achieving those grade-level skills by grade level. So you can see, I think, second grade, if I recall, is showing really good growth, particularly in the area of literacy. But we do have some areas, third, fourth, fifth grade, that we know we need to address, which we're hoping that as we consider our structured literacy pedagogy and our instructional strategies for shoring up those foundational reading skills, we hope and we expect to see an increase in those scores, particularly after our fall to winter benchmark next year, as we will be implementing our CKLA resource. So I think as we, you know, train our teachers in the fall on how to use that resource with fidelity, and we take our fall benchmark, we're going to have an opportunity then in winter to really look at the impact of not only our CKLA resource, but also our letters, because we'll be farther along in our letters learning. And we have our DigiCoach app, so we will be in classrooms really looking for those high-leverage instructional strategies. But that slide by grade is just showing you grade-level data from fall to winter, how our students scored on their FastBridge.
Okay. And how often do we take the FastBridge?
It's three times a year. There's fall, winter, and spring. And then as we continue to work with our MTSS TAZEN group, that is helping us create our framework for MTSS, we will be adding in progress monitoring, and those will be data points that we will look at as well.
And what was the other thing you said besides letters? What was the other resource you mentioned?
DigiCoach.
You mentioned something else, I'm looking at DigiCoach. DigiCoach is just observation.
DigiCoach is our walkthrough tool for observation, and we talked about the letters training and the letters data for, for how our, our teachers are scoring.
That's all you're using, letters?
And then we have our CKLA Amplify resource that we're implementing in the fall.
What word are you using?
CKLA, it's our core resource.
Oh, okay.
That's the one that you also kindly approved.
Right.
Us purchasing in December.
Okay, so help me with, with, with the letters. Why there, is, well, help me understand numbers.
Okay.
You only have 808 elementary staff?
We have 808 elementary staff, and so those would be teachers, administrators, and some support staff, like our speech-language pathologists, special education staff. So those kind of wraparound supports are also engaging in that training. And we have 111 early childhood staff. And as you look at the bar graph, what we're showing you there is, there is a pre-test that every teacher takes prior to engaging in the learning. And those pre-test scores were pretty much in the 50% to 55% range of, and that basically says, of the content that they will be learning, teachers went in with about 50%, knowing about half of that content, but needing to learn the other half in terms of some really explicit systematic instructional strategies on how to teach foundational reading skills. So then what you'll see is unit one, unit two, that is where teachers were scoring after having engaged in the learning. Now, what's a little, I don't want to use the word confusing or deceptive, but unit three, it looks like we've had a lot of teachers engage in unit three, but that really only represents about 100 teachers in our district, because we have certain cohorts that are moving ahead a little quicker, because they may be facilitators for us in the future as we build our own training teams to continue this work once KSDE isn't providing this training to us anymore. We wanted to build sustainability, so we have some teachers engaging in unit three already, because they're moving at a quicker track for training purposes.
Okay, and I guess this is a question for you, Dr. Stubblefield. Do we plan to continue using this resource?
Letters?
For all teachers?
The letters training? Yeah, so what Darcy was just explaining, right now, we have a combination of ESTER dollars and KSDE that is ensuring, KSDE, we're paying for specific teachers, but we included our SPED and some others. So as long as that money is there, all of our current staff, and what Darcy is saying, we'll have our trainers, our own trainers, so as we bring on new staff, that will be able to sustain and maintain. So letters is, is not necessarily a resource, it's a way, a methodology of teaching it. So we'll just embed it in, like, how we train our future teachers.
So how long is it gonna take to get 100% staff trained?
So the current group, I think it's a two-year.
It's actually, we're in a three-year cycle with KSDE. We did the first two units this year, we'll do three units next year, and the final three units the following year. So it's a three-year commitment. So within three years, we will have 100% staff trained, at least at the EC and elementary levels with, with letters, knowing that we're gonna have new staff each year. So we're building a cadre, like a train-the-trainer model, so that as we bring on new staff each year, we will be taking that group and making sure that they start engaging in the training, and they'll be on their own cohort track.
Yeah, so we'll always have 100% of the staff engaged in training, but depending on how many new staff members are, they will not be complete until after three years. So 100% of the staff will always be. So a hundred percent of the staff will always be either trained or engaged in training, like all of our elementary staff and our special ed teachers currently are all engaged in training right now. If they stay with the district in three years, they'll be fully trained, and so as we onboard a new group, we would always have a group in training cycle.
So letters doesn't apply to high school?
No.
No, not specifically, though we do have high school staff interested in engaging in the training, particularly if they are working with students who are so far below grade level and have foundational reading skill gaps. I do think it would be who votes in the future to make sure that we're getting some specialized staff trained at the middle and high school levels who are working with, let's say, students who have IEPs around foundational reading skills.
So my question is to you then, how do we do, what do we need to do to make that happen, and not just wait to see if it happens?
So systemically, right now, all of the space that we have available is for elementary. So once that group is through and we bring on a new cohort, depending on how many new teachers we have, there may be, we may be able to have the capacity to add middle school and high school staff. Right now, we don't have the capacity, because we're doing all of the elementary teachers, which is about eight hundred teachers. So next year, that group of eight hundred will be in year two, we won't hire eight hundred new people, so we may have the capacity to add middle and high school next year.
I guess, I'm sorry, I'm not asking the right question. Help me understand, what determines capacity?
The trainers who provide the training, there's a certain, you got, you have to have a certain number of people per training, and they have to have the availability, and we have to be able to build it into either, right now, we're doing it mainly on Wednesdays, do our professional development so that it's not optional, and teachers are there. So we have to like build out that timeline, and right now, the trainers are allocated to all of our elementary staff, so we don't have the capacity to add other staff, because there are only so many trainers that are available, because they're doing this with Kansas City, KCK, and several other districts across the state.
Right, and right now, we're still trying to train up our train-the-trainer model, and once we have that, then absolutely we'll be able to build more capacity in with different groups of adults that need to get this training, so that they can best serve our kids.
Well, because we don't have three and fours on our reading, then I think we need to start looking at how to increase capacity, because if, you know, are you saying it's successful, or you're not?
Once the staff is fully trained and as they implement it, the research shows that it is successful. However, there are only so many letters trainers, and so we've tapped out, and they've made special accommodations, because we are training more teachers than all the other districts. They are training specific grade levels.
We have a greater need.
Right, and so we're training, so we've maxed out our capacity for the current amount of letters trainers that are available. Once we have our own trainers trained, we can leverage the letters trainers and our trainers, but they can't, we can't accelerate the process any more than it is for our own in-house trainers, and the letters people have given us all the trainers that they have.
I guess all I'm saying is that we can't take our eye off the ball and just let it happen. We have to be proactive, and if, you know, you're saying it's successful, research says, then we need to look down that road to make sure.
Right, which is why we're training.
Things just don't happen by themselves.
Right, so which is why we elected to train all of our teachers, to train our trainers, and then to build in the sustainability plan. That wasn't a part of KSDE nor their recommendation, so those are the steps that we did to ensure that we're not just waiting for it to happen.
Thank you.
Ms. Russell.
Is the Summer Learning Summit taking place?
Yes, yes, so the Summer Learning Summit will be the last week of July.
And will this training be, will this continued working with the letters training be a part of that?
The letters trainings will continue all through next year on our Wednesday early release times. We will have a few of our trainers ready to train the first four units of letters for new teachers next year, so we will be ready to go with new staff who come on board, and will start their cohort training right out of the gate when they start their contracts.
Okay. And that will be during that summit training, or not?
It will not be during that summer training, but it will start during our New Teacher Academy.
And can you remind me of those dates, and what will actually, what training will be provided during that timeframe, if you know? If not, I can ask you later.
I want to say it's July twenty-sixth, twenty-seventh, it's that last week of July, and actually, the curriculum and instruction team is helping coordinate the topics for that summer summit, and we're doing everything from structured literacy, explicit teaching, multisensory instruction. We're looking at mathematics as going to be a focus. We are going to have a new math coach on the CNI team, starting with us July one, and she will be helping to coordinate this math piece. We haven't had anyone in that seat this year. And so we do have a new member coming on board, Dr. Ashley Udell, again, starting July one, so math will be a focus, reading will continue to be a focus, we will have science, social studies, project-based learning embedded in that, a STEM focus for, and I know that our Diploma Plus team is coordinating ESL, special education. We have lots of facets that will be covered, so that everyone has something that they can engage with and intend.
Okay, appreciate that. When you have more information, can you send that out to all of us, so that if we have the availability? I would love to get and see some of these trainings. I think maybe that will help with interpreting what, how things are working.
Absolutely.
And how we can better understand what you got going, so appreciate it.
And I, I do want to say, Rachel, the July, so the things that, all of the training she's talking about will be great, but we try not to offer required training during an optional time, because then people miss it. So that's, that's why the letters are on Wednesdays or professional development days, because that's when staff will be here. We do, or will, so that's why some of the required stuff won't necessarily be like on a time when staff is not.
However, we are paying staff.
Yes.
Be at that week-long training.
Correct.
But it's not going to be on the things that you need to ensure all staff.
Right.
Have not, okay, got it, thank you.
Ms. Page?
No, I was just wondering, we're doing a lot of tutoring for summer school, so the areas where we weren't as strong, are we going to work on some of that in summer school?
Yes, and Matt Anderson will be up to talk about tutoring shortly. It's part of our presentation, but yes, we're looking at all facets to make sure that we've got our bases covered for making sure students have what they need.
I'm sorry, I had one more question.
Please, Dr. Nguyen.
I asked Dr. Stubblefield this, is there a way that we can correlate efficiency test scores from the CAP test to your, what did you say, thresholds, I'm using thresholds?
Yeah, so I think the expectation would be, and you might correct me if I'm misspeaking, but when our executive director of research and assessment begins in the district, I know that's something that he will be looking at, is making sure that we're doing correlation studies between our FastBridge data and our state assessment data to really measure that predictive nature of one assessment to the other.
So that person doesn't come on until July one?
July one, I believe, yes.
Yes, that's correct.
That makes it pretty late, Dr. Stubblefield.
Correct, but he has agreed to do some things in the interim, and I know he does that for his current district, so we just will have to figure out some, now that we have our data, he can look at it, we'll work through it, but he officially starts July one.
Thank you. You're welcome.
Thank you, Ms. Swan. As Ms. Romstadt comes up, would just remind all staff and board members, please speak into the microphone, so the folks on Zoom can hear you clearly. Thank you.
Good evening. Oops, wrong way.
Good evening.
Here we go. So this first slide that we have in front of us is, gives us both a look at the participation levels, as well as the fail rates. There's two key points in this slide that are important, the first one being that we've seen an increase in student athletes and participants. If you look at the blue bars on the graph, you're going to see, those are the numbers of student athletes participating, so in the far left, in that blue graph, you see five hundred and forty-nine. That means in 2020, we had five hundred and forty-nine student athletes in all the sports that make up fall. If you go to the next blue over, you see two ninety-five, that's the number of winter, and same goes on throughout. When you get over to the right side, it's six oh nine, that's the number of students we had participating this year in fall. The orange bars are the numbers of Fs. So while we saw a good increase of about two hundred and eighty-nine participants, we also saw a reduction of Fs by about twenty-three percent. When you look at this graph, again, if you look at the far left, in fall of 2020, we had five hundred and forty-nine student athletes out for fall sports. Of those five hundred and forty-nine, three hundred and eighteen of them had an F. So when you look at, if you move over to 2021 fall, this year, we're looking at six hundred and nine student athletes and only two hundred and eight having Fs. So what we've seen is an increase in numbers participating and a decrease in the number of Fs. This next graph gives you an idea of the percent of passing. It's, so we look at 2020 on the far left, and you're going to see that represents the fall sports, and forty-nine percent of all those students that we talked about were passing. If you look at 2021 fall, which is about four over to your right, you're going to see that seventy-four percent of the student athletes in the fall were passing. Passing means that they did not have an F in a class. So if they're on the passing side, they did not have an F. If we look at winter, we're going to see the same similar numbers for fall and winter of in twenty, last year, having forty-nine percent passing to looking at seventy-four percent this year. And when we look at the current spring season, last year, we had fifty-eight percent of our kids that were in spring sports passing. Currently, eighty percent of the kids in spring sports are passing. Had several questions about tutoring, and on the slide, it talks about the several, lots of opportunities for the kids right now. Our in-season athletes, those are the ones that are currently in spring sports. Wednesdays after school, they have a chance for tutoring with TPT or Gear Up, it's usually in-person. They also have an opportunity to meet with any teacher where they would have an F after school prior to going to practice. So the in-season kids, if they have any kind of an F, they have to be in some type of tutoring. Our out-of-season athletes, that's those kids that played in fall that are no longer playing in sports, or the kids that may be competed in winter that are not currently in sports. They have many opportunities, whether it be, each school's different, whether it be during the day, whether it be right after school, that they can get tutoring. That's what I have.
Ms. Clerk?
I just, I have a question.
Sure.
Around the verbiage for F. Are we saying F on report card, are we saying F on progress report, are we saying F at the time of the game? What does that mean?
This data was pulled from third-quarter grades.
Okay.
Both last year and this year, so it's a comparison. We started that baseline last year. So at third quarter, this was the final grades. While we're in the season, we have different, you know, progressing times, and that's why we pull grades every single week during the season for the in-season athletes, and anybody that has an F on Thursday of this week will be required to tutor prior to practice next week, they have time to set those up.
Okay, and I'm familiar with that process. It was more of the data, just wanting to understand what you meant, what it meant by an F.
Thank you. Dr. Nguyen?
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. On your first slide, when you say participation, and you say total student athletes, are these total who participated, or total, total?
Great question. These are the total participants that are student athletes. So we may have, in this number, say for fall, we have five forty-nine last year. We may have an athlete that's a multiple-sport person. They're counted by CASA and by all of our data as a participant, so every season has so many participants, so we count them that way. So the number of actual student athletes will not be quite that high, because we have some athletes that just maybe play in one season, we have a few in two, we do have some that can continue in all three sports, but our data is always drawn by participation.
Okay, and the reduction of Fs by twenty-three percent, what's the real number?
So the number of Fs, and I believe, when we, no, that's the slide, so when we look at these, if you add up all those orange ones together, you're going to get six hundred and thirty-one Fs. So for last year, out of those participants, we had six hundred and thirty-one Fs. If you count up these orange bars for this year, we're at four hundred and thirty-eight Fs. When you divide your Fs into the number of participants, that's where you get that percentage, so that's where we saw the reduction.
All right, thank you. So then on your second slide, an athlete could have all Ds, because a D is passing, correct?
Passing for this would be they do not have an F, so yes, a D could be possible.
They could have all Ds.
Right.
Okay, and then, do you or don't you have exact, I guess, data, do you know who's going to tutor, tutoring, and who's not?
Yes, for, now, for the student athletes that are out of season, that means somebody that currently is not in the spring set of sports, those students can, are, can sign up for tutoring like all the other students in the school. The students that are in the spring sports, we require them on Wednesdays for the in-person tutoring, and we require them, if we find out they have an F each week, to attend the teacher or set up the tutoring prior to practice.
Okay, so I'll ask again, do you have data on your out-of-season athletes?
No, I don't, because those are considered student, just regular student body when they're not in season.
All right, so you don't have that data?
Right.
And then, on your current year's student participation by store, excuse me, by sport, is this, what is, what does that title mean?
By sport?
Slide one sixty-five.
Is that the one that was in the original packet?
Yeah.
Breaks it down? That should be by each sport, how many participants are in that sport, and then, I think they went through both last year and this year, so those are by sport.
So again, I guess my question is, is this, when it says total students participating, it's not total student athletes, total, big universe, it's just those who are participating in the, in the what?
In that sport, if it's by sport.
No, 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 I understand that, that's understood.
Okay.
I'm talking about, this does not have any relationship to tutoring, this slide, current year?
No, it's not.
Current year, page one sixty-five, it's just, just a number of students?
I don't have a check. Okay, this is the one. So this would break down all the sports by sport, and those would be the, the blue numbers, the total number of kids participating, the orange would be the number of kids that have an F.
And so is this?
By sport.
This is current year, so this is 2021?
This would be?
Or 22?
It should be 22. I'm looking to see what it says. This should be current.
So that's 20?
This year, this past year, is what it looks like, yes.
I'm sorry.
Fall would be 2021, and spring would be 2022. Fall sports, so baseball is a spring sport, so that would be 2022, and football's a fall sport, so that would have been.
This is the slide, and it says current year's students participating, so is that entire academic year, is that what you're saying?
Yes, so based off the sport, so right now.
I understand that, I just want to know what this.
Yeah, that's this current year.
This current school year.
Thank you.
Do you, do you, I didn't ask this in advance, so you don't have to answer it now. Do you guys ever track, many of the kids get scholarships? You know, there, when we first shut everything down, everybody was concerned about getting scholarships and doing, do you guys ever track that? You don't have to answer now, but I was just wondering. Let me keep a tally of, who got scholarships, from how many from each school in terms of athletes?
Sure, at the end of this, at the end of the summer, or before summer, at the end of the year, all ask athletic directors to find out from coaches, who are the seniors that are moving on to college, and then those who are actually playing, because some just go on to school, and some go on to play. So we do, I don't have anything to compare it to, because before I came, we hadn't done that. I also know that Diploma Plus can also pull out numbers. If I give them the, their ID numbers, they can tell me which kids are receiving scholarships.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Romstadt.
Good evening, Board, it's great to see you tonight. As you're aware, the Board approved the purchase of tutoring services from both Tomorrow's Promise Today, which we refer to as TPT, and then also Varsity Tutors in January. Since that time, I'm excited to say that both tutoring companies are up and running in our schools, and we have three thousand two hundred thirty-two students that are receiving tutoring services. As you can see on your screen, that three thousand two hundred thirty-two students is broken down by which tutoring company they're being. is broken down by which tutoring company they're being provided services by, as well as the level in which they are. So elementary, middle, and high. The graph also shows what content areas the students are receiving, receiving their tutoring services in. So we have math, ELA. And there's a small group of students that are receiving both. And that's based on the recommendation by both the principal and the teachers. In the data packet that you received prior to the Board meeting, you will notice that the data from the baseline, this is the baseline pre-assessment, aligns directly with what we're seeing in our FastBridge data, which shows that we have a significant gap in both ELA and math for our students, which is why we have the tutoring company in place. At the end of this school year, we will do a comparison of the pre-assessment data that you have now and the post-assessment data that they will give from the post-assessment at the end of the school year. And we'll bring that back to you at a future Board meeting. Next, we have DeNiro Fernandez Flores, who will be sharing college readiness data.
I have a question.
Yes.
Okay, you said they're going to do a pre and a post.
Correct.
Can we not wait until December to get that? I mean, I would like, we always say we're going to get it, but it's always three, four months down the road. And if we can do that, we should be able to get it quicker than that.
Yes, so?
To see if there's some growth.
Yes, Ms. Page, we will get that to the Board. One of the things that I'm working with, our coordinator of program evaluation, we'll do a program evaluation on the results of their pre and post-assessment. But we're also going to look at the FastBridge results to see what growth was made from fall, winter, to spring, to see how the tutoring has impacted that as well. So we'll get that to you. Our hope is that we can get that to you by June because it's going to take some time to calculate the numbers for the 3,000 students. But it won't be December, no. You're very welcome.
Thank you, Mr. Anderson.
Good evening. I'm presenting on two Diploma Plus endorsement measures we track. I'm going to start with our ACT scores. ACT is an assessment that 10th, 11th, and 12th graders can take. It is also an assessment that four years ago, our state committed to ensuring 11th graders would have access to. In this slide, we see our performance trend over the years that are represented here. There are two trends to observe. If you look to the left, you'll notice the number of students tested has declined by 567 students. And over the last five years, the composite score has declined by 1.2 points. A closer review, though, shows no change between the scores of the class of 18 and the class of 19. However, a decline of .7 is seen the year that we had our stay-at-home orders. And the following year that we were on mostly remote learning, you see a decline of .2. And then the following year of .3. So that kind of outlines environments that were taking place during those times. Currently, the scores that you see there for 2021, 2022 are scores that have been banned for now. But our students do have two more opportunities to take the ACT assessment. So that could change depending on how many students decide to take this assessment again. In this next slide, what you see is the ACT trend by performance. The performance in the different categories are parallel to the benchmarks that are set by ACT that you see on the left. So as you can see, English tends to have a lower benchmark. English is also the lower performance in our district as well. Science tends to have the highest benchmark. And science appears to be at the top as well. So our trends parallel the trends that the benchmarks ACT has established. In this next bubble chart, we showcase the participation rates of students. So as you can see in the gray, we have mostly Hispanic, Latino students taking the assessment. The smallest group is represented by American Indian, Alaska Native students. In the yellow, that's the group with the highest performing scores. That would be our white students. And the lowest scores were attained by a group of students with no ethnicity information. Now on to dual credit enrollment. What you're going to see here is comparison of a dual and concurrent credit enrollment and withdrawal, as well as those who successfully completed. Each of this data is from the fall. So what you see here is fall of 2019, fall of 2020, and fall of 2021. The decline, as we evaluated this data with our Diploma Plus team, is due to the learning environments during COVID. Washburn Tech had, had to space students out. And some of our students also were not wanting to attend in-person for that first year. We also had some of our dual educators who wanted to teach online. And our students did not want to participate online. So those were some of the learning environments that we believe impacted the enrollment in the fall of the years as you're seeing our trend decline. We are currently in enrollment process for our next year. And we are seeing a positive trend in enrollment back into our dual and concurrent programming. Finally, these are our KCKCC tech certifications. I want to point out that the 2021 data is for this year. So that should say 2021 fall. The 2020 data is for the entire year of 2019, 2020. And the one that says 2019 is for the entire year of the 2018, 2019. So that last chart, bar graph that you see there is the frequency up to the fall. We have 150 students currently enrolled with an expectation of 30% of those students attaining a certification. So again, we're going to start seeing that trend up as our learning environments start to normalize. And that is it for our Diploma Plus endorsements.
I have, now, you did the endorsements. But what about those kids who are getting an associate's and a high school diploma?
The high school diploma will probably be a report in the summer. And the associate's degree, we still have to complete the school year.
Okay, because I was just wondering, can we, can you give a four-year kind of trail for that? Because I don't think we got anything last year. So can we get an update on that as well?
We have in our plans to have an end-of-year report with all of our Diploma Plus endorsements.
Ms. Russell?
So I have a couple of questions. My first question is on ACT district performance. While I appreciate the overview of all of what's taking place in the district, is this data available by high school building? By each 11th grade?
I'm not sure about the 11th grader, but we do have it by building. It was in the full report.
So I thought you mentioned every 11th grader took the test. So are we having every 11th grader take the test and additional cohorts?
Every 11th grader has access to take the test. In our district, our practice has been to opt in. We are changing that practice to opt out. In other words, every 11th grader will have an expectation to take it moving forward. If a family member or the student does not want to take the assessment, they're going to have to petition not to take it. So up to now, students had to opt in to take the 11th grade ACT assessment during the school day.
My second question, I'm sorry. I was trying to think through my thought process right there. Apologies. My other question is around the dual credit piece. Is dual credit available at Sumner? I really would like a clear answer on this.
I don't, I believe so. I am uncertain of that answer, actually. So I'll get back with you on that. I've joined the team in January, and I'm slow to some of those details.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Dr. Nguyen?
I don't know either. I can't, if Dr. Irvin is on, if she's not, she may be able to tell us.
I have been told that our schedule at Sumner is a barrier. However, we've been working to ensure that we have some of those dual concurrent classes. So for instance, last, a few years ago, the college credit courses were a year long. In the other schools, they were a semester long. Our district transitioned to all schools being a semester long, which posed the barrier at Sumner. How we've addressed that barrier is by pairing up another dual or concurrent class with a, the first semester class. So in first semester, you're enrolled in college algebra. We will ensure there's something else for that second semester, such as accounting.
Okay. I just want to make sure that we all know what endorsements are available at Sumner because I don't think that there is a clear understanding overall, at all levels, maybe, of what is available and making sure that our counseling staff know what's available to students. Because I think, I love the coursebook. But when I look at that and I look at what 2031 and having all kids Diploma Plus, all I hear is IB at Sumner. But I'm confused of what other options, if you choose not to go the IB route, are available, so.
Our team will develop a clarifying document and ensure that it comes to you via Dr. Campbell.
Okay. And, and can I also just circle back to making sure that we get the ACT data scores by high school?
By high school.
I appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Absolutely.
Dr. Nguyen?
Thank you. And hello.
Hi.
I haven't met you before.
I know.
So help me understand. I see the dual credit completions by school. Is there a dual credit withdrawal by school? Is there, is there a graph that I didn't?
We have that information. And I am uncertain whether you have that information. We can get that information for you.
You, do you, is it or is it not in the packet?
I don't know if it's in the packet.
I don't believe, it's not in the packet. It's not in that two hun, it's not in that larger packet. We're making note of it now.
Okay. And, and then, the same kind of understanding. And for you all who talk to these students, is there any, other than, than the reasons you gave, were there any other challenges that caused them to withdraw?
I will discuss this with our building-level staff who support our students. When our students are having academic concerns, our staff intervene to provide either tutoring services or be able to discuss whatever issues going on in the classroom with the teachers. They will be able to provide more clarity on the challenges that they hear from students at the individual level.
And then, when they withdraw, are they allowed to re-enroll the next semester?
It is, my understanding, students are developing contract to ensure that the behaviors that may not have allowed them to perform academically can be altered. And yes, I believe students are allowed.
That is correct. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Fernandez Flores. Oh, I'm sorry, Ms. Page.
I'm sorry. I know they're, they're allowed to take it in the 11th grade. The state pays for it. But in some districts, kids are testing in middle school. And I know the state won't pay for that. But if, if a parent wanted to, could that child take that test then?
The state is also paying for 9th graders to take the pre-ACT. And I think Dr. Campbell may know more about other assessments with College Board.
So as we, as we looked at, are we, are we talking about ACT or?
ACT test. About, I know some 6th graders took it, 6th, 7th, and 8th.
Correct. And so in learning the model that was set up for KCK prior to our arrival, it was determined that we really did not have a system as such to provide that additional practice for our students before arriving to 11th grade. So beginning our 22, 23 school year, we will roll out a new model in which our freshmen and sophomore will have the opportunity to do the practice ACT assessment. Our juniors will have the opportunity to do the practice ACT assessment in the fall or the PSAT as we look for the national recognition on, on that, the national merit. And then, our juniors during the spring, again, we learned that it was an opt-in as opposed to an opt-out. So therefore, we will set the schedule that all juniors will be expected to test during that assessment day. And then, families will have to opt out if they are wishing their student to not take the test on that day. And then, we will pick up any seniors during that time also who may have missed that assessment window during their junior year. So we're looking to roll out a new model. But as we, as information, as we learned and understood what the current model in place was, that's where we're seeing some of those discrepancies of, we don't have as many students taking the ACTs as we probably should and also providing the practice that they are needing. Thank you.
And Ms. Page, you asked about middle school. In most middle school settings where kids are taking it, they typically are, it's like the Duke Tips or something along those lines. And they're typically in a specific program. I'm not for sure. We may have students who are taking it through the, our Quest program and those kind of things. But typically, foundationally, they're doing more exploratory around test-taking strategies unless they are in some gifted or Quest program. And that's typically when middle schoolers are taking it.
Thank you. Good evening, Ms. Garcia Stewart.
Good evening. This evening, my portion will be to share with you our district's quarterly attendance data. The winter data for the attendance that you see here is consistent with the fall data that was shared with you last semester. Also in February, if you recall, I had my colleagues from the Department of Student Services provide an A-to-A Attend to Achieve update. This slide does represent the district-wide attendance rate for first, second, and third quarter. And I will share what we will do to continue to work toward meeting that target attendance rate of 95%. I don't know what happened, I'm so sorry. Sorry, I apologize about that. Our year-to-date daily, average daily attendance indicates that there are some downward trends in average daily attendance, especially in the area of high school. The category labeled others, other, does represent our early childhood. And this is similar to the challenges regarding average daily attendance that we're seeing, the trends across the country. Chronic absenteeism, we have noticed some upward trends in chronic absenteeism, especially since the 2021 school year. But we will continue to focus on strengthening the procedures, training, and partnerships developed within the last school year, especially in the areas of race and ethnicity. This will include identifying our Tier 1 interventions in our MTSS framework to address the gaps that we are seeing in our school district. The tiered interventions include the development of our A-to-A Chronic Absentee Dashboard. And here, when we move, we will see the race and ethnicity demographics with an area focused on our Native and Hawaiian Pacific Islanders. And reexamining our attendance data per school and developing building attendance teams in the school to provide specific support for students and families, as well as monthly attendance student recognition. In addition, the work will continue to include our partnership, which we presented to you with our A-to-A Team around Attendance Works for the 22, 23 school year. Our Attendance Works initiative embedded in the MTSS framework has prioritized our CIS, CIS schools, where we have had moderate success with the baseline data since the onset of our partnership of January of 2021. Some of that data represents 45% of our CSI pilot schools have seen some improvement in Tier 1 attendance. And 50% of our school, 50% of our pilot schools have seen a reduction in Tier 3 attendance. And 70% of our pilot schools have seen, seen an increase in Tier 2 attendance. I will move on to our disciplinary data, Big Five. Again, this winter data for behavior is consistent, again, with what you were shown in the fall. We noticed, again, that approximately 2/3 of our male students are involved in a discipline incident. And our African-American and Latino students are involved in the majority of our disciplinary events. This, again, winter data is consistent with what we were seeing in the fall with the four major incidences, defiance of authority, skipping class, gross disrespect, and fighting. These occurrences and trends that we are seeing are happening on Tuesdays and Thursdays, midday, and in the classroom and in the hallway. There has been an increase in our school resolutions rather than short-term suspensions as the district, again, works to strengthen our MTSS framework around Tier 1. as the district, again, works to strengthen our MTSS framework around tier-one, tier-two, tier-three interventions. So what does that mean when we think about our social-emotional support and wrapping around our students? So this interdisciplinary approach with all divisions in the district with solid structured instruction, classroom management, and social-emotional learning support in the classroom will cement the work with our multi-tiered system of support framework. We will continue to align our efforts by embedding social-emotional learning with instruction, the Department of Equity and Inclusion, behavioral hall support in our school, and beyond the school hours, professional learning and support, including but not limited to our trauma-sensitive and resilient schools initiative. If you recall, again, we had our trauma-sensitive and social-emotional learning coordinator also present, and strengthening our student code of conduct to reflect the priorities of the district that will reinforce early intervention and limit punitive responses, as well as establish a district-wide behavioral approach for the 2223 school year. And this will conclude my portion of the presentation.
Do you have questions?
Ms. Gar- thank you, Ms. Garcia Stewart. Ms. Clark?
I, I do have a question, and I can't say that it's specific to you. It's just specific to, to everything. So thank you for the information today.
Yes.
One thing that, and, and I am careful and remember our conversations about one board member asking for things versus it being good for the greater good. So for me, when I read this, I thought about our parent involvement. I don't know that it would be helpful for the board to have that information going forward. I would lean on the board. But we didn't talk about our parents, and that's one thing that the conference really emphasized, is where's our parents? How do we move the needle? We talked about our test scores, and then, but how are we getting our families involved in those conversations? I do these masks around the breath sometimes. And then, the last thing I thought about, and again, this is just me, is Sumner. So we know that Sumner is its own unique school. And really, wearing my board hat there, but our community has a lot of chatter around the number of students that are accepted, the ethnicities that are accepted. So what does that look like? And then, when I look at this, and I look at our black and brown students being lower, then it also makes me wonder about Sumner, and is it equitable for all students? So I don't know if that would be beneficial for our future, but just wanted to put my thoughts out there.
Thank you, Ms. Clark. Ms. Page, yeah?
Yeah. And mine is just a comment. When you look at the percentage you gave for brown and black males who are having disciplinary problems, how do we get more men involved in our schools? Because when you look at education, most of the people who teach are women, and there's an issue. So how do we get, and are we doing something to get more brown and black men involved in our schools and programs that are available? Because that's where the disconnect is. They see women all the time. So they need some male role models. And I'm not saying the trauma-sensitive stuff doesn't work, but we need another piece of the puzzle to make it work, because they see women all the time. They need to see some men. And they need to see themselves.
I agree. I agree.
So I didn't know what we're doing, and how you're trying to bring in other groups. But we got to look at that, and we can't keep just going on, oh, here's the data. What are we doing to try to change it?
So one thing that we're doing is continuing to strengthen our community partners while being sensitive to the over-initiatives that might be happening in the school. But I know that it might have been two board meetings ago that we presented the collaborative with KC United, Thrive. We also partner with Alive and Thrive. We have an upcoming partnership that is specific to mentoring, and hopefully, we'll have an update around that soon. So really consistently working with our community partnerships that, that we're seeking and that are seeking to be in our schools, and really making sure that it's aligned to our strategic initiatives and what Lisa Walker shared with you around our KISA goals. So that alignment's important, and making sure that they have sustainability and the capacity to be in our schools. And also, because it does include work with our schools too, even when partnerships come in, it's a married approach to how that's going to work and what the school has capacity to support as well. But we are consistently seeking those partnerships, and we welcome them for those that certainly want to be a part of our schools. And I don't want to be remiss. We also have Caring for Kids. It looks for the one-on-one mentoring and working in our schools as well. But always open for strengthening that area and looking for those partnerships.
Thank you. We'll go to Ms. Russell, and then Ms. Drew.
So, I just have a couple of comments. My first comment is around attendance incentives. For some students who show up on days that they can be, I just want to be careful that those don't become punitive to those populations of students that will never, based on their situations, will never have the opportunity to obtain those. I think there's a huge equity issue there. When we constantly reward those students who are able to show up and be present every day, and other students just have to watch, because whatever their family relationship, whatever is going on in their environment, doesn't allow them to show up every time that they are supposed to be there. And so, I just want to be cautious of that. The other piece of that is, I just want to echo Ms. Clark's remarks around parents, and then, and, and how do we break this language down to also share this information with our community? I know they have the opportunity to watch this, but this is so big picture. How do we make it more tangible for families, communities, and parents to be involved in this process right here? And then, lastly, I've been listening to the conversation around community partners, who's currently present, and a lot of that is, is present in our elementaries and middle schools. I don't know that I saw on the list of community partners that was provided to us, who directly is working in our high schools. And if we were to break this data down around disciplinary, I would, my perception is, is that a lot of this is taking place in the high schools. And so, to the points that have been said, how do we both utilize the ESAR dollars that we have set aside for community partners? How do we go and find individuals and say, hey, we want and need to work with you on these things? So.
So our partnership with Thrive is in our high school. In fact, we have staff housed at Windout High School, and they serve that area of zip code. Young Women on the Move provides support from middle school to high school. I don't know that I indicated by which level, but we do have strong partnerships in the secondary schools. And Caring for Kids is kindergarten through 12th grade. And KC United provides that support. Those were the top partnerships that I indicated. Caring for Kids serves our entire district, and they can certainly be by organizations such as Church of the Resurrection, if they really want to work to support and work with students and our staff. And then, also, any individual can provide one-on-one mentoring. And so, we can, I can, provide any of the lists of volunteers that maybe aren't necessarily representing an organization or agency, but want to volunteer in our district. And so, every organization and every volunteer fills out the volunteer application. We provide a volunteer orientation with, that does come and includes a complete background check. And most of the time, not all of the time, our volunteers particularly have an interest in one school, but we see that K through 12. So I can also, if that's helpful, provide that to you as well.
And I will say, there are a couple of community partners that have reached out that they, their target areas are middle and high school, and they're going through the process of looking at MOUs, their capacity, where our greater needs is. And some of them are, you know, specifically for males, and some specifically for young ladies. So there are, it's just the process and looking at their capacity and what they can do, and then us targeting where we need it the most. But I do know that we are in-
That meeting's tomorrow, actually. So we're really excited to have that.
Yeah. So we have some meetings in progress around that. And we do welcome, you know, any suggestions. And the ones, when we find out about them, we are reaching out to them and asking them, you know, how we can partner with them as well.
So I will sound the alarm again. I've brought this up in emails. I've brought this up in board meetings. I have asked for all of that information so that we can see where we're not, where the correlation to our disciplinary issues, as well as community, community partnership presence. That information has not been provided for variety of reasons, and I'm totally understanding of that. But I-
Which, can you clarify what informa- like, what information has not been provided?
So I asked what partnerships we currently have.
We, we-
Well, I don't want to-
No, I'm not. I'm saying, we can send it again, but we did not submit the ones that we are in talks with, because we're finalizing that. But we did submit the list of those who are actively in there. And I did say I will provide an update of the ones once we solidify, like, we are moving forward with them.
I will, after this meeting, put all my requests in one email, again.
Thank you, Ms. Russell.
Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Garcia Stewart. See Dr. Campbell approaching the microphone. Good evening.
So, we want to thank you for this opportunity, and I want to kind of conclude. A great deal of information has been shared with you all. You received a document that consisted of 200-plus slides, because we wanted to ensure that we were transparent in helping you to take a deeper dive, as we do through the data that drills down specific for grade level, background, ethnicity, school sites. So that, that information is for you, for your purview, and to provide any additional questions to us. But we feel it's important to be transparent as to where we are while articulating our plans of what this may entail moving forward. The first thing I will state is, we are not where we want to be and/or need to be based upon the data that has been shared. Our academic trends, that includes college readiness, informs us that in order to move the needle to increase our percentage of low-risk to college pathways, as displayed in our FastBridge data, we must ensure that our teachers not only understand how to utilize curriculum at a tier-one level, but we also must work to ensure that their instructional plans incorporate that tier-two and tier-three intervention support. That's that MTSS that we continue to talk about in all areas, academic, behavioral, and socially, social and emotionally. This can be done by continuous feedback that we will utilize through our DigiCoach model, and observations at all levels. Additionally, a shift is being made to use data to drive all instructional, excuse me, all decisions, and not just making decisions based upon what we think. The coaching tool, again, DigiCoach, along with professional development plans for teachers and administrators over the summer and the upcoming school year, are some of the models determined we will use as we work to positively impact our outcomes for staff and students. The attendance and discipline data displays a downward trend with a specific focus on ISS and OSS rates. Again, with the intentional shift of using data to drive all decisions, this has prompted some next steps that include, but are not limited to, the revision of our current student code of conduct that is being designed to hold students accountable, while also recognizing that we must adopt a district-wide discipline model that creates a safe and secure student environment that is not only equitable, but one that doesn't depend on exclusionary discipline practices. We must expand on and continue our training and support to staff around restorative practices, diversity, equity, and inclusion, while ensuring that our SEL curriculum is embedded in our everyday work with students. This is a high-level summary and next steps as the data is used to inform the work that we must continue. So my ask of you at this time, are there any additional questions that we may be able to answer as a team?
Thank you, Dr. Campbell, and I apologize. Ms. Drew, I know you had your hand up for a comment or question. Ms. Drew?
I did not have a question. I just wanted to thank them for their presentation. But it gave us information about areas of improvement. And I wanted to go back to the comment that Dr. Nguyen mentioned about, after we went to the NASBA conference, we as a board need to come together to come up with a plan that we can possibly present and submit to be able to help them continue with what they're doing to try to listen and learn, not only for them, but for our students, for our parents, and for our community. And that way, we can be strengthened across the board. That's all I wanted to say. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Drew. Dr. Nguyen?
Yes, and thank you, Dr. Campbell. And two questions for you, Dr. Stubblefield. Will we use 2021 CAP data, or will we have 2022 to use as we do the budget?
You will not have 2022 if you, you won't have 2022 data until probably like June. So depending on where you are in the budget process, because the students are taking it, test now, it typically, the window closes like in May?
Yes.
So then, the state has to do all of this calibration. So you will not have 2022 data. You'll have preliminary data in June. They typically do a few rounds before they finalize it. So if you want preliminary data, if you're still making budget decisions, it will be June.
And we'll have to use 2021 to, to address the Senate bill that requires us to use state assessments.
Yeah. And that's the data that, which I think Tracy just sent to board members this afternoon, or she'll send it tonight. You'll have a link to all of the building needs assessments, and that's the data that they used for their building needs assessment. So you'll have access to that.
We have building needs, and we also need state assessment data.
It's built in their building needs assessment. That's the data that they use to say, this is where we are. This is what I presume.
And we can always go on scoreboard, score, scorecard for the school.
Yes, yes.
And then, secondly, when do we get data on teacher evaluations?
Teacher evaluations, as far as where the each level is, that, so the second round of evaluations just ended. So it, they have to upload that. Typically, we would have that. Same, when do we have to submit that to the state at the end of the school year? That's when we'll have it all finalized, because although the deadline is April, if anybody's on growth plans or those kind of things, that can carry over into May. So at the end of the school year, we have to submit a state report. We can share that information with the board at that time, because that's when it's finalized.
Thank you.
Thank you. Any other questions? Dr. Campbell and, and your team, thank you so much. I know that was a ton of information and a lot of work for you all to put that together for the board tonight. So just thank you for the time that you've taken to make sure that you're keeping us updated, and for putting that together. Thank you, board members, for doing your due diligence and, and reviewing and, and asking some really great questions as we continue to work in this space and do what we can for our students. But again, just, we've got room to grow, but I'm, I'm very hopeful for, for the, the team that we have and, and the work that we're doing and the work that you've shared tonight. So just, again, thank you. We really appreciate it. And I know there was a lot of requests for extra information and, and data. And I know that pulls you from doing things in your day-to-day. But again, as we can get information to, to help supplement and, and give us input as we're making decisions, that's always helpful too. So again, just thank you for your time. We're going to take a quick recess. I know we've been sitting for a bit, just to be able to stretch your legs. So why don't we take a quick 10-minute break and come back at 7:45? Thank you. Thank you. We're going to go ahead and regroup and start continuing with our agenda. Thanks for allowing us a quick break. So, next on our agenda are board updates and approvals. Board members, you'll recall these, all of these items have come before the board at least once previously and are up for approval. The first item on the agenda is our concrete repair project for 2022. So, I would entertain a motion to accept bids from NTS contracting in the amount of $139,700 for concrete repairs at various locations as submitted by Wayne Carell, Director of Purchasing, Dr. Ralph Turan, Interim Chief Operating Officer, and is recommended by Dr. Stubblefield, Superintendent of Schools. Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or discussion? Hearing them. Ms. Smith?
Delanda Clark.
Delanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries. Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next on the agenda is an, an item that the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education approved, receiving the NFL Football Field Surface Grant in the amount of $250,000 to be used for the installation of artificial turf field, submitted by Dr. Turan and is recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield. Is there a motion to do so?
Moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or discussion? Ms. Page?
First of all, I have a problem with this. And my first issue is on, the board didn't authorize this. This was done from a former employee who did this without our knowledge. And then second, we don't own the property.
So, I just want to clarify, this is different than the original information that was brought forth. We're not, we, what we are saying to the NFL in the grant is that we want to accept it and we are exploring where it can, the field may possibly go. The two places that we have, one place we looked at was the Colby Bruce location is too small. We're now looking at actual, at Sumner High School and evaluating what needs to be done with that. Accepting this grant still gives the board the option not to move forward with it. What it says to the NFL is, we're not declining the money yet. If the board decides later that they, we don't have an optimum location, we don't want to commit the money, the board can decline it at that time. The NFL also may choose to, if we come up with a location that's not feasible for them, say, this is not working. What you would be approving tonight is to receive the grant and then we both have to do what is outlined. The NFL grant partners have allowed us to explore other locations. Eisenhower property is not on, that's not what this is about. It's not about it being at Eisenhower.
I respect what you just said, but I still say, my, I'm not voting for it because I don't like how the whole program came down. Plus, we end up spending more than what we're getting. And that doesn't make sense to me. You get 250, but then you end up spending nine, eight, 10 million. That's not spending the community's money wisely, to me. And that's all I'm going to say. I won't, I'm not trying to argue the point. I say no because it's not in our best interest.
So, I just want to clarify, the amount that the board will be committing to is the 550,000. The board, over, for several years, has money set aside for the Sumner field. I believe the last number I saw was 10 million. So, what it would do whenever you, if the board ever decided to move forward with a field for Summer is reduce that cost by $250,000. Does not mean, again, that if you vote to receive it, that you, you still have an option to back out. But I respect your position. I just want to clarify for the public that this is saying, yes, we'll accept the grant and then we have to move forward. There are certain things that we have to do for the NFL. And then if the board decided later, it's no-go. We can reject the grant later. So, that, I just want to clarify, that's what, this is not a specific location, nor is it a complete commitment, is saying, yes, I'll, we still want to be on the list to have $250,000 allocated towards us putting a new field in, which that was, from my understanding, on the list of capital improvement plans prior to anyone applying for the grant.
Dr. Nguyen?
Thank you, Mr. Lopez. What concerns me, Dr. Stubblefield, is what you just said. Because what, my understanding, so I guess I'll need to ask for some understanding. What you have written here, or what is written here, says the same thing that we had been talking about for the last 30 days. And now you're saying what you're asking, what is being asked of us is different. Now, that adds another layer of confusion because, I know I missed last meeting, but the conversation you just said is new to us tonight, isn't it?
No, because we sent the information in the end-of-the-week updates that we were separating, accepting the grant from the Eisenhower project. I also spoke with individuals saying that we're separating it and exploring the locations. What the NFL needs to know by Friday is if we've never formally said, yes, we want to accept the grant and then follow the process to see if they actually give us the money and/or if the board wants to continue with it. So, I, while the initial, I acknowledge when we first came, it was tied to the Eisenhower project. But since then, we have sent the communication. We've gotten permission from the NFL to not receive the grant. I mean, to not, not to not receive the grant because we haven't told them that, but not to specifically talk about Eisenhower. So, I just want to be clear about that. But that is not, is not new information to, tonight. We, we shared it previously. It's new, like publicly on the board agenda, but we did, I, we did share the information.
Yeah, I mean, I spoke with you.
Yes.
So, I understand that. But, but what is not, has not changed, and please correct me if I'm, I'm incorrect, the 250,000 is tied to a 550,000 commitment?
Yes.
That is a turf field that has an estimated annual cost of maintenance of 9,000 a year, 9,000 per year, right?
Yes, which is not any different than our other current turf fields.
Okay, so, so it's, it's a little different, but it's not that different. And, and my conversation with community people suggests that there's this imbalance of, to get 250, you have to spend a million and that if we were to proceed. This is the conversation, does the conversation still hold true of upwards of 2.3 just for phase one and ultimately perhaps 20 million?
That's if you were going to the Eisenhower project. If you're just putting a field at Sumner, at Sumner, no, because Sumner doesn't have the space. You would be replacing, if you were just putting a field there. So, I, which I understand, you know, the process of how it went about wasn't idea. I get that. But I do want to clarify, if you put a turf, if you plan to build another turf field for Sumner or another field, you will spend minimum a million dollars. This would reduce the cost by 250,000. If you don't want whatever the requirements of the NFL to be a part of that, then you're, that's what you are saying no to. You, but if you're not going to do a field, if you didn't have any plans to do a field, if we don't have any plans to do a field, then you're right. It's committing dollars to install a field. So, that's what I think you need to delineate with. Like, if you've decided we're not putting any more fields in, that those dollars will be somewhere else, which is a whole different conversation. But if there is still thought around adding another field, which I don't know where the board is with that, this would be reducing your cost by 250,000.
Well, because we never had that conversation. Nor have we had a conversation of the advantages of grass and turf. You know, when you do research, we haven't discussed the research of the injuries during practice and games of turf. So, you know, there's, there's numerous reasons, but I, I cannot support this. And honestly, those people in the community that I've spoken with say, anyone who votes for this deserves to be recalled. So, the logic is, is not a balanced logic, that, that we haven't determined whether we want to build any field. We haven't researched the pro and con of turf versus grass. And then, then in our conversations, all of a sudden, the, the dyna, well, I won't say the dynamics, the details are changing and that concerns me because is it more important for a construction to go on? Or there's more important for, you know, student achievement, student health? And I don't think we've done our homework, so.
And I respect that. And I don't think it's a or. And I, my recommendation is the board take a vote. And if it's not, it's, we will contact them and say, thank you for selecting us no. And if it's yes, we'll continue to provide information.
I mean, this is a $250, we could pass and then get it from other places. But it, it, we, we just haven't had a conversation of, I mean, when you said, what'd you say? The process was less than ideal? That's very polite and you're a polite person and I respect that. But the process was really messy and it continues to, to be messy if, if the board does not stand up and say, and I've said this before, staff committing taxpayers' dollars without our approval is appalling and is illegal. And we keep rubber stamping this action like it's okay. And with my constituents, it's not okay. So, thank you, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Nguyen.
Madam Chair, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Dr. Nguyen. And, and I think, you know, just to add some commentary too and, and my perspective as well. And, and I appreciate the comments that have been, been brought up. And you're absolutely right. You know, unfortunately, the way that this project was brought forward, you're absolutely right, Ms. Page. I mean, I think, you know, the board did not, did not approve the scope of the project. And I think that's why Dr. Stubblefield and team and in conversations, we are separating this. we are separating this NFL grant from what was proposed with potential Eisenhower in order to give the board to have conversations and real input on what the project might look like. So I, I think that's what we're trying to do. We know and we are aware that a mistake was made and that the process to, to bring this forward was, was, was not the best. I think this is a way that we're trying to rectify that and, and give the board an opportunity to weigh in on what the, what this may look like moving forward. I do, I do recall that there have been conversations about a Sumner field and what that might look like and that there's some money set aside for a Sumner football field, but that's another conversation as well. My, I would be very, I think this is an opportunity for the district to accept an award for, from the NFL, from the local organization, Lisk, who's helping with that, to, to be, to be recognized for some of the work that we're trying to do in order to bring and upgrade some of the facilities that we have in our, in our district and in our community. And, and I understand, you know, it's, it's taxpayer dollars and committing, and we're getting 250,000, having to pay 550,000, but if we're going to build a field, that's money we're going to pay anyways. And the 250 is what's being, is a grant that we're, that will help us make that happen. So I'd hate for us to, for us to pass on an opportunity like this. Again, this doesn't commit us if we accept the award. It doesn't say, yes, we're gonna do this regardless of, of how, of what we, what, you know, regardless of how this moves forward. It just says, yes, NFL, we do want to accept the award, and we're gonna continue to look into and have conversations and investigate, where's the best place to do this? How's the best way to, to move forward on this? And, and again, if it, you know, Dr. Stubblefield and her team have been forthright and honest with us every step of the way since we've started these conversations. And I, I, I trust that they'll keep us up to date on what's going on. And if they say, hey, board, realistically, this can't work, I, I trust that they'll tell us that, and we can, we can then, again, say no to the grant at that point or, or return the funds. But I, I'd hate to, to miss an opportunity on a partnership with the NFL and Lisk on that. But that's, that's just my, my perspective, so, yes, Dr. Nguyen.
Well, Mr. Chairman, NFL's not going anyplace. So I'm gonna make a substitute motion to not accept the NFL grant, but to continue the conversation so that the board can have a full conversation on a field. And say a turf field, I said a field, so I'll repeat that. For this, for Ms. Smith, I move to make a substitute motion to not accept the NFL grant, but to continue, excuse me, but so that, but that the board continue to have conversation on a field.
I just want to clarify, you understand by not accepting, we have a deadline of April 15th to accept the grant. By not accepting tonight, then we're essentially declining the NFL grant. I just want to make sure that we're all clear on that.
I, correct.
Okay.
I move not to accept tonight the NFL grant.
Second.
Okay, there is a motion, a substitute motion and a second. Again, I, I just, I understand the, the points that you both are making. I think it's, it would be a disappointment on personally and just from as a community member. You'd say you speak to your constituents, I speak to constituents as well. And I think this would be a huge disappointment for our students who, if you look at the facilities and the fields that our students have to deal with versus other fields across the metro area, I think that's, that's a hard, it's a hard thing to tell them that, that, that we're not gonna take this opportunity right now. And I know you're not saying we're not gonna build a, a, a football field. But I, I, I think to say that we're not gonna accept this NFL grant is a huge missed opportunity if, if that's the direction that the board wants to go. Dr. Nguyen, yes.
I would tell those same students that we are trying to protect your parents' tax dollars so that you can stay in school, so you'll have resources, that we're not trying to screw the community by imbalance, that this is, we're not missing the opportunity at this point because we had to have not had a balanced, informed research discussion, that we are being good stewards of taxpayers' dollars. So, but if you want to frame it like that, you can frame it. My frame and response would be, no, we're looking at to weigh, do you want a turf or do you want a grass? That if your body is most important, your, your health, then we're gonna weigh that. We're just not looking, we're just not taking the first, first train down, down the path.
I think that could still be accomplished by accepting the grant and still do the research and the investigation. And if we determine that this is not the best approach, then we can decline the grant at that time. But by declining, you're not even giving us an opportunity to do so. Ms. Russell.
So as we know, this is a very, on many different levels, this is a, this is an issue, this is a topic that is near and dear to many people. And, and I think, I will say that I am voting to approve this. But I am very hesitant. I think from when this came out in January to now, we have not had a discussion as a board around this or the alternative things that are being suggested. That's troublesome, because I think even in that meeting that was brought up, that we will wait until the last minute and then we will be asked to make a decision, and I think that's problematic. I continue, I know that our staff is working hard to figure out solutions. I don't doubt that. But I, I am voting yes in the, with all of the trust that this will come back to the board before a decision has to be made for a conversation and questions to be asked from all board members. I know there has been some confusion, some this, that, and the other. I agree that if we were to say no, there is a, a return on investment that is immeasurable by dollar signs with accepting this, this opportunity. I am very supportive of our kids having the opportunity to have world-class fields. I do have a question of clarification around where the fu, the 550,000 is coming from. It is my understanding that these are coming out of capital outlay dollars, which are for, for buildings, whatever, for projects such as this. Can, can you confirm that? Yes?
Yes, so there, there's a capital outlay improvement plan, like a three-year plan that'll be at an upcoming board meeting. But there were dollars allocated by previous boards. Some of the board members here may have been a part of that, that it said Sumner Field. So that is where it was coming from, so, yes, it would be.
In the event that it is a Sumner.
In, in the event that it's at something, but prior to all of this, because the other schools, my understanding is, has a field, there was like, we gotta figure out something. I wasn't a part of conversation you want, so I'm operating off of secondhand information that there was something to be figured out for Sumner, and that's why that line item said Sumner Field.
Okay, and then the, and I will close with this. In the final presentation, this conversation has been ongoing for years around fields, whatever. I appreciate the fact that accepting these dollars puts a timestamp behind when this will happen. We, I hate to use the word kicking it down the road, but unfortunately, that has been what has happened in our athletics department, and it must stop. And this is an opportunity to tell and show our kids that we know academics are important, but we also know the importance of having the opportunity to play sports in world-class facilities with each other. And the opportunity, I, I think the, the things that were mentioned around being able to hold track meets and those different types of things, our kids deserve that opportunity, and this is one way to get to that, so.
Thank you, Ms. Russell.
And then we all, we were told, when they said it was 10 million for Sumner, that the Sumner Field could not sustain the field, that the drainage system was poor, and that's why it was just kind of left there. So it's not that we don't want them to have it, and I just didn't like how the whole thing went down. Because we seem to be in a pattern, that people go ahead and do things, are we really the board or who's really running this? It comes back to that for me, because other people are making decisions and then they bring it back, well, we didn't tell you. That's crazy.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Ms. Clark?
No, I just was gonna call for the vote, or is that where we are?
Thank you. Yep, if there are no other comments. Ms. Smith, there is a, we're voting on the substitute motion to not accept the NFL grant as submitted. I'm sorry?
Submitted by Dr. Nguyen.
As submitted by Dr. Nguyen and seconded by Ms. Page, yes.
Okay. Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, no.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, no.
Janie Humphries? Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, no.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell, no.
Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you, the motion does not pass, thank you. There is still a motion on the floor and a second to approve receiving the NFL football field surface grant as recommended. I would call the vote, Ms. Smith, please do a roll call vote.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, and before I provide my explanation, I am voting yes to this for the same reasons that you've heard tonight. Our students are other places, they see other fields, and while it may not have been brought to us appropriately, things happen. And so I want to, for me, I need to be able to move forward for that and not let our children not get what they need or want, or at least give them the option at this point. So yes.
Thank you. Ms. Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries? Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, and no.
Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen?
Dr. Nguyen, no, and I will repeat again, as long as this board allows staff to commit taxpayers' money without any review, then there's no reason to have a board. I vote no.
Thank you, motion carries, thank you. And I do want to make sure, again, to address the concerns and the questions. And you're absolutely right that we need to continue this conversation and not kick the can down the road and make sure that the board is fully aware. I think it is a little unfair to, I, I think we just, you know, we've got a new administration, new leadership that I believe has been trying to do right by the board, by our students and by our staff. And, and we shouldn't hold it against them that things were not done properly before they came in, but give them the opportunity to, to rectify and to be honest with the board and bring forth the proper information so that we can make the best decisions for our students and staff. And Ms. Russell, absolutely, I think, holding ourselves accountable to make sure that we're having these conversations and bringing these forward. We'll make sure we do that openly, thank you. Next on the agenda is recommended to, that the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education approved the ESER III preliminary application as submitted by Ms. Tracy Kaiser, Executive Director of Business Operations, and as recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield, Superintendent of Schools.
So moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded, questions or discussion? Seeing none, Ms. Smith, roll call, please, oh, I'm sorry, Dr. Nguyen.
There was a 500,000 for a survey. Did you explain that?
For a survey?
Said survey.
For, is it under the ESER III or II?
Good evening, board, if I may add, it was the CTE praxis fees. We estimated 500,000, but we would need to survey staff on their interest if they would be willing to take the CTE praxis fees.
So the cost was not for the survey, it was for, in our CTE pathways, we don't necessarily have enough people who have the appropriate certification. So it is to take away that barrier for staff members who may have interest in gaining another certification. And I will add, everything that's on this list came from the various surveys that we did of recommendations to include in the ESER funds. What the board would be approving is to take these items, not the necessary, the dollar amount, because any, if it's approved by KSDE, we would have to bring it back to the board for final approval before the dollars would be dispersed. So this is to approve the list, to take the KSDE so that we can get feedback on whether these items would be approved and accepted, so.
So is it 500,000 set aside for a survey or a survey?
500,000 is for the praxis test. So it, it, several staff members, the praxis test, I think, is depending on, the test is maybe a couple hundred dollars or a hundred or so dollars. So it would be, but you're not, the, the dollars amounts are estimates.
Okay.
We don't submit those to the state, so all of that, we would have to bring back here before we can actually move forward with it. So at that time, the actual cost would be there.
So don't pay attention to all of the descriptions. Because they may not be.
It may not be, because we would have to bring it back to the board. It's estimates based off of what, when we said, so if every eligible staff member wanted to take the praxis test, this is how much it would cost. They're all on the most expensive level, but it all would depend on what actually gets approved by the board.
Right, and Dr. Stubblefield, I would add that I estimated 500,000, and the need is to survey staff on the interest. There would be no cost to survey them, it would just be to ask if they're interested in taking the CTE practice, praxis exam, and then that would indicate what the total cost would be for the district.
Thank you, Ms. Russell.
So Tracy, that also means by the time that you bring it back, that 2.5 million that's unallocated will be, you're just submitting the list, and then when you bring it back to us, you'll have all of the numbers kind of closer to their solidified numbers?
Well, we will submit it to the state based on the list. And then, over the next year and a half until September of 2024, those numbers will continue to change based on the board's approval on what you guys would like us to spend those funds on, and we resubmit that to the state.
Gotcha, so we don't have to worry about the 2.5 that's unallocated?
Right, unless there are ideas that you have that you would like us to allocate those dollars to, we can just submit that to KSDE.
And then we, if something comes up later, we can al, always resubmit or add to the list, yeah.
Yes, I'm honestly resubmitting about every quarter, you know, based on what has changed. And, you know, when we estimate summer school, for example, and the costs come in higher or lower, which has been lower, but then I resubmit to KSDE quarterly.
So do you plan, Dr. Stubblefield, then, to resubmit? She says she's gonna resubmit, she's gonna submit quarterly. Do you plan on bringing it back to us quarterly?
So we bring it back to you as items come up. So for example, in the previous board meeting, when you approved the intervention for ESL, and that was out of ESER dollars, it came here, we got the actual amount, then Tracy submits it to the state. So you approve it before she resubmits, like the specific thing. So it comes to you first before we resubmit it to the state for the actual dollar amount. If it's something new and we don't have dollars allocated and it doesn't fall with any of the categories we've already submitted, she'll resubmit, but there's no dollars tied to it. It's just that here's another area that we would like to add as an. It's just that here's another area that we would like to add as an, to see if it's allowable expense.
I mean, there are just some things that are not sustainable, and we've had that conversation. And that's why it, it is not, first, there's no deadline. I spoke with Craig Newen Swan, and he said there is not a deadline. It just has to be spent by 2024. So I understand you all had conversations about kicking this down the, the road, but there's just some items that are not tied to learning loss that were, the, I say, explained to some of us as being the focus of these funds. And so some of those that seem to be just salary with no justification, again, this is one-time money, and once you build it in after that third year, whenever, well, '24 must be spent by, then if we can't sustain those dollars, there's going to be a problem, so.
So just two points of clarification. We never indicated there was a deadline. We said that in order for us to access the dollars, because there is a short window to spend this amount of money, it takes eight to 12 weeks for the state, that's what, we'll share with us.
Yeah, I know, I know that process.
But, and then the things that are in there that are salary-related, those, again, came from staff, community members, or whomever. So we just put it all on the list, like the salaries for the positions. We have been very clear around those positions that are not built into the budget with individuals that it ends when the money's run out. So the things that are, that as we collect data and we see the researchers supporting it, then we collectively, the board, will bring forth recommendations on how to make it cost-neutral, not necessarily adding something new to the budget, like swapping something out that may not be working. But we've been, I've been very clear with staff that it, it has to be sustainable, or it's truly one-time money, or we have to, and we have to be clear when it's individuals that it's, this, these dollars run out in September of 2024. So we've been clear about that. I know when it actually, the rubber hits the road, there may be difficult conversations, but we do have documentation that we've been clear around those things.
Thank you.
Thank you. Other questions? Seeing none, Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Janie Humphries? Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Wayne?
Dr. Wayne, no.
I'm sorry?
Dr. Wayne, no.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion carries. Thank you. Next on the agenda is a recommendation that the Kansas City, Kansas Board of Education approved is designating Tracy Kaiser, Executive Director of Business Operations, as an authorized representative of the food service program and the revised resolution as submitted by Dr. Ralph Turan, recommended by Dr. Anna Stubblefield, Superintendent of Schools.
So moved?
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions? Ms. Russell?
You mentioned that this item came before the board previously. Can you give me a little bit of history?
So I may have misspoke. I don't know that this specific designation came before the board. The resolution came before the board. Would that have been in January to appoint the food service representative? That position has since been vacated, and so we need to designate an authorized representative of the school district to fulfill that role. So this is just to, to fulfill that resolution. And if I misspeaking, Greg, or someone else, please correct me.
Yeah.
But I just.
Yeah, you're, you're required to have somebody for your federal food dollars designated in this position. The current person that you designated is no longer in their, that position, so you need to designate somebody new.
And then when we replace the new, the director, we will put that person in that position. But you approved the former one previously. But we have to designate someone.
It's just a question.
Yes, Ms. Page?
We don't have an assistant. Josh didn't have someone under him. He's just over food service, and when he leaves, you have to.
He does have an assistant, but there are certain things tied to the audit and some other federal things that they don't necessarily know and understand, and we have to come in and do the audits. And so that position is posted. We will get interview candidates once it closes and that kind of thing, but we just have to have a name and somebody who understands those audits in that position in the interim.
Yes, Ms. Russell?
I just want to be clear. So this isn't the day-to-day operations of that?
No.
This is related to document reporting?
Yes.
Okay.
Yeah, they, they sign off on your financial documents, go into the feds, is what they do.
Okay. Thank you for that clarity.
Thank you. Dr. Wayne, yes?
Um, I guess this is a question for Mr. Goheen. What does KSA 721138 say about the time of the, the meetings? Once you establish it, we've been meeting at 4:30, are, is there?
Yeah, so that, that's, it's, I think you and I talked about it before the meeting. You can adjust meeting times. You're always capable of doing that. If, ordinarily, though, when you set your meeting times at the beginning of the year, it does, you are supposed to set a regular meeting time, which is the date and the time the meeting's supposed to start on a regular basis. So if, if the change or the modification to the start time is going to be a more permanent change, then, then it might make sense to modify that resolution so that you have that on a permanent notice out to the, to the public, basically. Does that answer your question?
Correct.
Thank you.
And frankly, if you wanted to, you can modify this resolution to take care of that if you wanted to.
Should be the will of the board.
Well, I know at, at one point, the board did have a conversation about meeting start times and whether we wanted to keep the five o'clock start time or move up to 4:30. And if I recall, there really wasn't a lot of consensus around either. There's pros and cons to both, and at the time, we had decided to keep the resolution and meeting times as is, as 5:00 p.m. and to revisit at the next, the next date when this resolution would be revisited at the yearly meeting. So I'm, I mean, I'm open to conversation.
You can consistently have a meeting at 4:30 when your resolution you passed said five. That's, that's, that's the, the problem. So either, either you change it or you stay at five. That's, that's the reality.
And as Mr. Goheen noted, there is a little bit of flexibility if we need to start a meeting a little earlier. And I, and I understand we've asked the board to meet a little earlier, more than once since January. So absolutely, but I, it does allow some flexibility for us to start a little early if needed. If the will of the board says, hey, don't start before five o'clock, as it stated in the resolution, then we'll just make sure that we don't do that. You know, I think we were just trying to make sure, especially on heavy agenda days or days when there's some executive sessions to get things done, that we try to get things accomplished, so.
I get the logic. I'm saying you have a resolution. You tell the public you're starting at five. Because of a change, we're revising it to this evening. Moving forward, if you don't plan on meeting again at 4:30, one would think you meet at five because you've said publicly you meet at five. Now, if you see long agendas coming, then you change it to say 4:30. I mean, it's, it's not flexibility. You've publicly established by law a meeting time.
Right. And then we do publicly notice the meeting date and time. If it is changed at 4:30, I know the board clerk does publicly notice the meetings to state the time and location for meetings. I'm not disagreeing with that.
No, I'm not disagreeing with you either.
I'm just saying that there has been, there have been some, some times when we've started at 4:30. If the board wants to change it to 4:30, there's nothing, we can do that tonight if we want to keep it to five. And I'm not saying that we're not going to, that we don't need to change it. I'm just saying it's allowed us a little, we've had some flexibility, we've changed it. If you say, don't do it again, we won't do it again. We'll just.
I'm not saying anything. I'm saying you've put in statute what time it's going to start. We just need to acknowledge it, okay?
Absolutely. And I am acknowledging, and I'm also acknowledging that there are times when we have started early. It gives us a little bit of flexibility. Thank you.
I would agree, because when I brought up four, you laughed me out. Nobody wanted to hear it. So I agree, we do need to establish a time. Is it 4:30 or is it five? We said on the sheet it's five, so what is it?
The resolution states 5:00 p.m. That is what it is. There are times when we have asked and requested the board if you could meet at 4:00, 4:30 p.m., which the board has agreed to in those, in those instances. If we would like to change it to four or 4:30 or 7:00 p.m. or whatever the will of the board is, we can. The resolution does state 5:00 p.m. We will keep it at 5:00 p.m. unless the board says, let's change it. Ms. Drew?
I don't mean to be rude or disrespectful, but, and maybe it's me, but I thought we were discussing the appointment for a representative for food service in order for us to vote, and we haven't voted for it, but now we're in a whole different discussion.
Thank you for keeping us on track, Ms. Drew.
Only because that's on the sheet with the list of things that are on there. It just happened to came up because we were on that.
Absolutely right, Ms. Page. Thank you. Ms. Russell?
I will make a motion that we move our meeting times to 4:30 and we appoint Josh as the food service administrator.
Josh, Tracy.
Tracy.
I mean, thank you. Sorry, I was looking at the resolution.
This would be a substitute motion, right? Because there's a motion, was there a motion already on the floor, Ms. Smith? Okay, so there was a motion and a second, so this would be a substitute motion to designate Tracy Kaiser and to change the meeting times as designated in the resolution to 4:30 p.m.?
That is my motion. I apologize again.
Thank you. Is there a second to the motion?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. My question would be to staff, to Dr. Stubblefield. I know it's half an hour and we've done it several times, but moving forward consistently, does that pose a problem for staff to start at 4:30 meeting times?
It does not pose a problem for staff. I think we would just, depending on who's been recognized for student or staff of the month, maybe have to bump that down a little bit in the agenda so that staff and families can get here if they're at a late school or that kind of thing, yeah.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Seeing and hearing none. Ms. Smith, there's a substitute motion. Again, just for clarity, the substitute motion is that we approve designated Tracy Kaiser as, as an authorized representative of food service program and change the meeting start time within the resolution to 4:30 rather than 5:00 p.m. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, no.
Janie Humphries? Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez? No.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Wayne?
Dr. Wayne, yes.
Okay, motion carries, so we'll make sure to get those changes in the resolution. Thank you. Next on the agenda is, Board, just a reminder, these two items were added to the agenda, but they were, again, mistakenly taken off, so you should have seen these previously. Recommended, Kansas City Board of Education approved the recommendation to purchase independent reading books for all elementary and middle school students. Is there a motion?
So moved?
Second.
There's a motion and a second. Any questions or comments? Seeing and hearing none. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Wayne?
Dr. Wayne, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. Next on our agenda, that the Kansas City Board of Education accept bids from Cruz Corporation in the amount of $2,165,400 for mechanical upgrades at Eisenhower Middle School and at F.L. Schlegel High School.
I'm moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Questions or discussion? Seeing and hearing none. Ms. Smith, roll call, please.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Wayne?
Dr. Wayne, yes.
Thank you.
Motion carries. Thank you. All right, Board, next on our agenda are new business items. Again, these are new items that are coming forth to you. You have information that was included in the board docs, so hopefully you had a chance to review them at this time. Again, these are just informational items coming forward to you. If there are questions about any of these specific items, now would be appropriate to do so. So the first one is the purchase of materials for seventh grade, Kansas history, psychology, sociology, and world geography. Are there any questions? We have Ms. Darcy Swan available for, to answer questions if needed. Okay, seeing no questions. The next item on the agenda is the Wit and Wisdom Language Arts Intervention Resource. Any questions for Ms. Lisa Walker? Okay. Next item on the agenda is the Swope Health Kids Care MOU with a head start. Any questions for Dr. Cook? Dr. Wayne, yes?
Uh, thank you, Mr. Lopez. Could you help me find the cost of this MOU, the amount? Did I, I couldn't find it. Did I miss it?
Dr. Wayne, there is no cost associated with the MOU.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Dr. Cook. Other questions? Okay, seeing none. We'll keep moving forward. Thank you. Next is the purchase of materials for Bridge for Diploma Plus. Any questions on that item? Okay, seeing none, we'll continue on. The next item is to replace the lockers at F.L. Schlegel High School locker rooms and Wyandotte High School Field House. Questions? We have Mr. Correll with us. Seeing no questions. Thank you, Board. Next item is the toilet partition replacement at various locations. Questions? None, thank you. And the last agenda item in that section, the contract and leasing with Mossile. Any questions here? Okay, seeing none. Thank you, Board. Again, if questions come up as you're reviewing information, please send those to Dr. Stubblefield, and we'll make sure to address any questions. These will come back around to the board at a future board meeting, potentially at the next board meeting, next regularly scheduled board meeting. You will see these items again. All right. The next agenda item is the board discussion. First on the agenda is to discuss our mask policy. And, and just for transparency, I'll just, you know, kick us off and say, I requested to add this to the agenda tonight to, for the board to have a conversation around our mask policy and whether that is appropriate for us to continue or not. I know we've had a few discussions. The data continues to, to change and shift regarding our, our COVID situation in the metro and in the country and in our district, and also information regarding masks and the appropriate use of masks and, and what is the best mask to wear and how to wear it and all of that. So, you know, I, I just, in conversations that I've been having, when you look at the data, first of all, a lot of the data can be confusing around COVID, and not all the data is the same. And I know this board currently, our district, is following the CDC guideline that if Wyandotte County remains in red or high, that we would continue with our mask requirement. I would actually challenge that a little bit, and, 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 Board, I did share some information with you all via email. Hopefully you had a chance to, to review that and/or, you know, look at some other information. I know what, I know what the CDC website says that we're red and high, but, you know, when you look at the data that the UG is providing, that even the CDC's website is providing, is showing that our COVID numbers have decreased dramatically and significantly, and the percent positive rates within Wyandotte County are, are lower. You know, we're, we're absolutely not where we want to be with our vaccination rates. We could definitely improve with it as a county. But I think, you know, when you look at. But I think, you know, when you look at the data coupled with the social and emotional needs of our students and mask-wearing eight hours a day, and I, I'm not 100% sure of this, but 99% sure that we may be the last district in the state of Kansas and in the metro area that are still requiring masks. I would actually make a motion that we, the Kansas City, Kansas Public Schools, become mask optional beginning tomorrow or immediately. I would actually say immediately. Understanding that, you know, we can always, if the Board chose to, could always go back to requiring masks. But I think, you know, that the emotional and the health concerns, I think, are absolutely, you know, what we need to continue to monitor and look at. But as we look at the data and where we're at, and again, just the emotional and social needs from our students who are masked up every day, I think. I think, and just for discussion purposes, I'll make the motion to do that. So, there's a motion on the floor. Is there a sec? There is a second, so I'll open it up for conversation, discussion, and questions. Ms. Page.
You say that, and it amazes me because when I checked with the CDC, we're still high. The K.D.H.E. said we were medium. And I keep hearing people say, "Oh, around us." Well, just for your FYI, Shiny Mission closed. They have six elementary schools that are back to wearing masks. Piper had to shut there, they had to go back to masks two weeks ago. See, we never hear that. We only hear that we're the only one. And we've only had 57.3% in our county have had one shot. And then we're barely keeping teachers. And we're putting our, I'm not, I'm not saying that we shouldn't be concerned about the kids. I am. I want everyone to be safe. But it's hard to ask people to come in here and risk their lives. We have a lot of medically fragile students and adults. And we're putting people's lives on the line. And if I was still teaching, I wouldn't do it if you dropped this today. Because that says you don't care about me. And I think we need to protect our teachers, all of our staff, and all around us. It's happening. They're just not reporting it. And that doesn't make sense. And I haven't heard you ask for a medical person to come up here. You're coming with what you think and what you say. So we, if we're going to do it, do it right. But we need to protect our kids, all the adults who work for us. And no, it has not been easy. No, who wants to wear a mask? I would rather not. But we want to keep everybody safe. And the numbers here are atrocious. We're still in the 50s. And not everybody has been vaccinated. You can't make them, but the one thing we can do is this. And in addition, TB is on the rise again. And we got all kind of stuff we're dealing with. And I think we're being irresponsible if we say, "Let's just drop the masks. Don't wear them tomorrow." That's it.
Thank you, Ms. Page. Other questions or comments?
So what is our policy? That if we're, I thought we had it in our, because Ms. Lewis noted it last time.
Yeah.
As long as we're high?
So currently, what the Board has designated is if the CDC is designated, designating Wyandotte County as high or red, I think, I think it's high is what the term is, then we would continue to require masks for all students, staff, and visitors at the district.
And what does CDC rank, I mean, Dr. Stubble, for putting your Friday update, was it this past Friday, that we're high?
The CDC updates every Thursday. Wyandotte County is still considered high.
So we're still technically high?
Yeah. And K.D.H.E. has us at medium, I believe.
Correct. And the U.G. COVID, you know, is showing, and they don't give a high, medium, or low. They're just kind of showing their dashboard's showing decreasing average daily cases or, you know, plateaued average percent positives, so there's a lot.
The email you sent us.
I'm sorry?
It was the email you sent.
That was one of the, yes, one of the links I sent you. But yes, you are correct. The CDC still has us as high. And I believe part of that, and again, this is the, part of the issue with some of the data is it's up for interpretation. You know, some of that is hospitalizations are high, are showing higher in Wyandotte County. And that could be for a myriad of factors, including, you know, we do have the KU Hospital here, which is, could be, and I'm not saying that it is, but could be the draw that is where folks are going for care for that. But, but to your point, yes, the CDC is still saying we are high. And the policy, correct, yes.
Thank you. Which would warrant keeping masks until that CDC designation changes from high to something less than.
Correct, yes.
Got it.
So, Ms. Russell, I saw you. Did you have your hand up? No, okay. So I guess maybe a question for Greg. Since our policy says, or the policy we're currently following says that we're being guided by the CDC, do we need to, I know my motion was to go to mask optional, does that supersede the policy that's currently in place? Or would we need to change the language in the policy?
The policy has other COVID mitigation factors beyond just the masking requirement, as I recall. I don't have it, I don't have it pulled up in front of me. My recollection is that a host of COVID mitigation factors that the district was following based upon the levels of, reported by the CDC. That was my recollection of what it, what it says. And then also, I believe it was tied to what guidance you had from the CDC as it related to what those mitigation factors were as well. Again, I don't have it pulled up, but that's my memory of it. So the motion, as I heard the motion, was just to make the masking optional. So, my read would be the only modification you're making to the policy is just to the masking component of it and not making changes to the other part of the policy. If you want to make changes to the policy wholesale, you'd have to rework the motion.
Okay, thank you. Other questions? Dr. Nguyen.
You kind of swallowed your words there at the end, so.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
What did you say to the point? What, partial change of policy? What?
Yeah, so the way I would understand the motion right now is the only part of the policy that the motion addresses is the wearing of masks as opposed to any other mitigation factors would still be required by the policy until the CDC numbers change. I don't remember what those were, or if the CDC numbers go up, then that would trigger additional obligations. The motion was specific as to the masking requirement and making masks optional, starting, I believe, tomorrow or immediately, whatever the language was. So that would be the only part of the policy that would be being changed. It's just the mask would be optional going forward. The rest of the policy would remain in effect based on.
And what is the policy toward changing policy?
Policy, yeah. Yeah, you get three reads. That's been our Board practice and procedure for that. That's true.
So even if lightning struck right now, you could not take, change a policy without three reads?
The Board could do that, but that is inconsistent with the Board's practice and procedure. That is inconsistent with the consistent practice and procedure this Board has been to have three reads for a policy change. First read, a second read, and a third read where the vote takes place.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Other questions or comments?
Man, you know what's so amazing about this? We have medical people and not a soul, not a soul. You know, we're paying people. And I don't know why they're not here, why they're not saying anything. That makes no sense.
So I will give the offer that we have a Director of Nursing, but she is not an infectious disease control person, or that's not her background. We just share the information around CDC and K.D.H. guidance. And so in order for it not to be, if there is a recommendation to go away from that, I would not want to have staff make that recommendation because that is not what we hired them to do around that.
Okay, but the only problem, we've had her up here before.
Right.
Stating what the Health Department said.
Correct.
So-and-so and so-and-so said.
And that, so those.
At least that's their profession. Give us some background, give us something. And you just walk in here and say, "Well, I just thought about this and I think we need to do..." Come on now, we always say we want facts, we want data, we want this. That just seems kind of crazy.
Well, correct, but as a Board, you all, this is, if you're going to change it, that's a Board decision. That wasn't coming from a recommendation for staff. So the information that Mr. Lopez shared, the information that she shared previously, the information that's out there, that, none of that has changed. What Mr. Lopez was asking you all to consider was a change in policy. So there was nothing that staff, honestly, unless you had a specific question about, did something change? And Ms. Lewis is available. There was nothing that she would be offering to this conversation that's not already there other than her opinion. And I don't, that's not her role to offer her perspective or opinion about what she believes or should be done because in her role as the Director of Nurse, she's just here to give the information that Mr. Lopez shared that we had already shared. So that's why she's not here presenting.
Okay, well, I'm just saying, I would think we would get the CDC, because I called when I saw that it was on the list again, and they said we were still high. And then I checked because someone had told me, "Go on NPR and check out Shiny Mission." They had six schools. They had to go back to masks. They said also check out Piper. So I've been trying to check because I get so tired of hearing people say, "Around here, we're the only ones. We're trying to keep people alive and keep them safe." And we're not just doing it, just, we woke up, "Oh, man, we just need to do this." We're trying to look at the data. We're trying to make sure everybody's safe. And then when I found out, wow, TB, that's on the rise again. So we're dealing with a lot of different things.
Ms. Russell.
So I will say this conversation is very interesting, and I'm going to try to keep it down. And as a Board, I believe that we have seen nothing but recommendations as it results to COVID. We have watched Mr. Linkus bring forth recommendations. We have watched Elizabeth, prior to Ms. Lewis being here, bring forth recommendations. So I think it's really interesting, very, very interesting, that now we don't take recommendations from those that do the work. I also will say, when we made policy changes to the athletic program, that recommendation came from a staff member. I don't want to belittle the work that our staff does every day. And I felt a little bit frustrated because I thought that's what we were doing to Ms. Lewis just now. However, when we had this conversation four weeks ago, when we had guests at the podium saying, "Get rid of it," we took the recommendation of the Health Services team. So this conversation feels a little funky, and I don't know what to say yet. But it feels very awkward, and I feel like this did not have to be put on the agenda because we just had this conversation. And I can't put my thumb on it yet, but something doesn't feel right about this. And I am going to leave it at that. But I will say, I will be voting no because this is not a recommendation from our Health Services for consistency purposes. If we wanted to do what everyone else was doing, we should have did that a long time ago. When everybody else sent their kids back to school, this district stood by it because we knew our kids' best interest was in mind when we were making that decision. I know that there are positives and negatives to each of them, but I am very taken back by the statement that we would not allow those who work in Health Services, keeping track of our numbers, have been at the front line of this this entire time, that we don't want their input on this decision seems very fishy. And I will leave it at that.
So, and I'll, thank you, Ms. Russell. Other questions or comments? And I appreciate that. I will, again, to what Dr. Stubblefield, I did not want to put Ms. Lewis in a position to make a recommendation. I think if, and I can't speak for her, so I won't. You're right. But, yeah, I won't, I won't try. Thank you. Any other questions or thoughts, comments? Okay, hearing none. Ms. Smith, just for clarification purposes, and I know we're going to vote Mr. Goheen, because this is potential, a potential change to policy for the motion and for the vote, is there anything that we would have to do in order to stay in line with our process of how we make changes to policy?
Well, I mean, your ordinary practice or procedure for policy changes is to do multiple, the multiple reads. So if you're going to stay in line with that, you would, you would do this as a, as a first read, change to the policy tonight and let it pass as such, and then it would be on the agenda for next meeting for a second read and the meeting after that for a third read. As I indicated, you can depart from that, but that is a departure from your normal process. So right now, the motion is simply a motion to remove the mask requirement from the, or not remove the mask requirement, make the mask requirement optional under the Board's COVID policy.
Mr. Lopez, if I may, maybe, maybe I can't tell you what to do with your motion, but maybe we, you withdraw your motion and we think about what this looks like for the future because it doesn't sound like it would be supported. So I don't, it's 100% your call, but it is, what is next steps for our district? If we want to look at future having it optional, what does the Board need? Because, I mean, you can't make people get vaccinated. We don't know what the future holds. If they, if they're not vaccinated at this point, chances are they may not even be going into the next school year. So we really need to think about that. That's my only comment.
Yeah, thank you. I think, and, you know, the Board will vote, how the Board will vote, I think, you know, we owe it to, to ourselves and to have this conversation and to, you know, if we continue with masks or continue with other mitigation process protocols, you know, that's, that's fine. I just thought it was that we should have at least a conversation. So I'll, I'll just go ahead and call the vote. Ms. Smith, if you wouldn't mind doing a roll call.
I'm sorry, who initiated the motion? I didn't hear.
I made the motion and Ms. Clark seconded.
Ms. Clark, I'm sorry, okay. Thank you. Yolanda Clark.
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, no.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page.
Wanda Brownlee Page, no.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, no.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, no.
Thank you. Motion fails. Thank you. Next on our agenda is an update or discussion on Eisenhower Park. Board, I would just remind you, in the Friday updates that were shared by Dr. Stubblefield, we shared that there was a meeting that took place here at the District Office, which involved our Superintendent and certain staff members, Mr. Goheen and myself, as directed by the Board to have a, and to give the U.G. an update on conversations that the Board has had around potential projects at Eisenhower, specifically the Eisenhower Athletic Field. So I'd refer you to that email with that information about what was shared, who was present at that meeting. And this is, we just wanted to make sure that, to give you the opportunity to let you know that that meeting happened. Again, nothing was shared that hasn't already been shared with the Board. This was in result to conversations from the Board to say, hey, we need to let the U.G. know what's going on with, with these conversations. We reiterated to the, to the U.G. that no decisions have been made by the Board by any means regarding Eisenhower or potential projects at Eisenhower. Again, it was just to bring them up to speed on the conversations that we have had, although limited, but at least take the information to them that we've, that has been shared with the Board. So I don't know if there's anything else Dr. Stubblefield wanted to share outside of what's already been shared in her Friday updates and what's been shared to each of you. There were members of, a few members of the. There were members of, a few members of the Commission who were present and some staff from the Mayor's Office and their legal counsel. And again, it was a conversation about the Eisenhower, the conversations that the board has had regarding potential projects at Eisenhower. But again, nothing, no decisions were being made or were being asked at that meeting. And it was just an update. I will, on a side note, also just mention, and this was also in the Friday update, Ms. Levers was also invited to discuss the library and the downtown library. So she was also present. And again, she just brought up to speed to the UG the conversations that have taken place with the board. No new information was shared. We, again, reiterated that there are no decisions regarding the downtown library at all regard, in any direction. So we did share that and made that clear with, with the UG. So just wanted to give you a quick update of that meeting last Friday, last week, whenever that was. Are there any questions or, Dr. Nguyen?
So when is the next meeting planned?
There was not a date established. I believe Mr. Goheen is going to work with their legal or somebody to schedule a joint meeting.
Where was left off, well, there were two, two issues that were left off. One was that this was informational. There was some discussion about whether there was any interest by either side in revisiting the legal document that exists for the Eisenhower Park. There's a, there's a contract between the UG and the school district from back 1971, I think is the date, that talks about that and whether, if there were going to be any improvements made to that park, what that would look like from an ownership of the land. As I think this board is aware, that land that Eisenhower sits on and the park sits on are divided between the Unified Government and the school district, with each owning different pieces of that property. And with improvements that have been constructed by both entities on the other person's property or the other entity's property. So for example, our track and the field is on the Unified Government's property. A little water, I'm going to call it a water park, I don't know what else to call it. That's actually, I believe, on the school district's property. So even the UG, it put that in and operates that through their park system. So if the parties are interested in moving forward with any kind of redevelopment or redoing of any of the improvements on that, that property, there will need to be a discussion about the legal document and how we want to approach that. I think that some of the board members here had discussed a desire to make sure that if we were going to put any significant improvements on the track and the field, for example, that we wanted to have ownership interest in that property that, that, that those improvements went on. And by the same token, I think if, if the UG is going to put some improvements in, I don't want to speak for them, but they may want some ownership interest in that, that aspect of it as well. So say that in that, so there's that aspect of it. And then there's also the question of whether the governing bodies at some point want to have any kind of meeting either jointly or separately in terms of agenda items actually formally discussing whether there is a desire to revamp or revitalize that, that piece of property, to put improvements by either entity into that park and that, and that development there. That's, that's guidance that, that staff needs from the governing bodies before they can really move forward and do anything. Although you do have a bit of a chicken and the egg problem of, I can see the, the boards, meaning the governing bodies saying, well, what are you, what are you asking me for? So for example, from the Unified Government's perspective, the, I think the question they're asking is if we're wanting to do improvements to, say, the, the track and the field there for our middle school, what is our ask of the Unified Government? Is it just that we want the property? Is it that we want them to contribute monies to it? Is it we want them to provide in-kind, you know, contributions? Whether that's lights from the BPU or parking or whatever it might be? We're pretty far away from having that kind of discussion, in my opinion, because I don't think, I don't think this board has decided what you guys want to do in terms of, of those improvements. We did have that initial conversation because we know they've got some money for their parks available for improvements. And we know we've got some money available for improvements if we choose to do that. So that's, that's kind of where we're at. There's not a meeting set, is the short answer. The longer answer is, you know, I think there will need to be a couple of additional meetings to see if there's interest in some sort of joint project there or not. And if not, then, then that becomes kind of a moot point and you don't want to waste resources or time of your staff working on a project that, that the board's not ultimately wanting to look into. I think that's kind of where that stands.
Well, I have three questions for you.
Yeah, sure.
One, where is that document? We need to.
I'm looking at it right now.
Okay, so the board needs to read it.
Yeah.
Number one. Number two.
I would send the one I've got, but I just noticed as I was looking at it, it was written on legal paper back in the day, since it was 1971. And the copy I have is chopped off, so I'll get a complete copy and send it to everybody. Yes.
Okay, that's, that's minor.
Yeah.
Number two, who owns the rec center? And number three, do we pay utilities?
I don't know if we pay utilities or not. I don't know the answer to that question. I've seen a nod in the back of the room, is it yes? So I suspect that's true. I believe that, if I'm looking at this agreement correctly, I believe that, that we constructed the rec center and I believe we constructed the, the middle school building. And I believe that's the way I read this. And so I think we probably own the building. I believe the rec center is on school district land, but I'm not entirely sure. You'd have to look at the track to see. Because it's, what I've got here in the document, the legal descriptions are like you would see on a deed.
Correct.
So I'd have to see it mapped out to know.
Okay. And then I guess the subset of that question is, if we own the rec center, where are the rental fees gone to?
Well, the agreement talks about shared use of the, of the facilities. And there, there's obligations for maintenance and upkeep in here, but I don't know. My, to my knowledge, there's been no, no change or departure from this agreement since it was created.
All that to say, before, one thing, before we sit down, we need to figure out what we know about our obligation, our, our position.
I agree with that, yeah, I think that's true. And, and, and take a hard look at, at what, what you want to do there, if that's the place you want to do something with your monies.
Well, I mean, I think that's step two. Number one is where are we?
Yeah.
So.
Agreed.
Don't get the horse cart before the horse.
Right. You want to, you want to know what the lay of the land is before you decide whether you want to do something different or.
Well, right now, none of us know anything.
Other questions?
Thank you, Mr. Lopez.
Thank you, Dr. Nguyen. Okay. Yes, Ms. Russell?
So now that I've cooled off just a little bit, I do want to go back to this mask policy mainly on Ms., to Ms. Clark's point. If it is the will of the board, I would like to see a survey of our staff individually and a survey of our families individually of what they would like for us to see. If we take our personal thoughts and our personal feelings towards what we should do and listen to what the community says we should do, I think that should guide our decision. I think we're saying the data is different, but if our staff is saying one thing, our community members, because we all can talk to different groups of people. But if we give people the opportunity to tell us, to inform us, then I think that should be how we should lead our decision. I also have in my mind, while I don't want to make an irrational decision, I do have graduation in my mind of we will be going into a facility that does not require masks. However, it is a district sanctioned, sanctioned event. Do we want to be the mask police in, in that event? Or do we want to be celebrating? So I, I would much prefer, while we have the decision to change policy here, I would like to hear on our, from our constituents, this is the same, if not similar thing that the KCK chamber did when the Commission made a decision. And I feel like that is in the best interest of all parties, both the families and the students that we are responsible for and the staff that we have hired to be in our buildings to take care of our precious children. So depending on what the will of the board is, I do think there needs to be closure. I just want to know what our community, because I'm torn between, I know there is an audience that is tired and exhausted, but I also know that there is an audience of students in this bed department and those who present that we also have to protect as well, so.
Thank you, Ms. Russell. Are you making a motion there? Or are you just asking for more conversation?
Do I need to make a motion for a survey to happen?
Well, not necessarily. I just thought it might make.
No.
I, I mean, and I, and to your point.
I just want to know what the, like, I don't want it to be a Rachel thing that I'm saying after I voted no because I am passionate about saying no today. But I do think to Ms. Clark's point that we do, like, at what point do we change our mind?
Sure.
And if the CDC, based on all the data, whatever, I, I'm, I'm a little torn, but I also want the community to have a say so in this.
I would love to, I would love to see that as well. And I'd, I'd agree with you that that would be some great information input to get from students and community members. So I completely agree. So thank you for, for bringing that. I don't know other board members.
Whatever you do, if we have people and we're paying people who are supposed to be our health professionals, now they don't have to say, this is my opinion. They get the data, they bring it, they've been bringing it. So include all of that as well. Because it doesn't make sense to pay people and then we don't even bring them in. It's almost insulting.
It is, very.
Yeah, I mean, that's mind-boggling. Well, why are they here?
We're pretty, yeah.
Ms. Clark?
I just want to, and I'm not saying a survey is not the right thing. I'm just saying that we've surveyed our, our families, what, three to four times in the last month. And so people do get tapped out when it comes to surveys. And so I just, I just want to say that out loud.
My every intention with this survey is as if our constituents, both students and families, are saying to let go of the mask. I have every intention of letting, of my vote being letting go of the mask versus my personal and what the help, and the consistency of the data that we have followed thus far.
And I'm totally with you because, I mean, you're absolutely right. Removing our personal, we have a huge scope of people in there on all opposite sides. So I 100%.
Let your voice be heard, as Dr. Anna Stubblefield said.
I, I agree with you. I also agree with Ms. Page, though, as we continue the conversation, definitely getting our medical professionals in for, not necessarily to give us disease control, but just making sure that we, we have let their voices be heard as well as far as the, what should happen in our districts or in our schools, what they would see as maybe problematic or non-problematic, so.
Doctors, and I don't know how other board members feel. It sounds like there's at least a few of us who would be interested in going to look at our, our Superintendent.
Well, if you don't pay, charge $500,000, okay?
We have a survey platform. We can definitely send it to our staff, our families, and then our sixth through 12th graders, maybe. When you said students, is that, is that who you're thinking age-wise? Is that who we typically survey when we ask students?
I just mean families overall. I don't mean you. I do want to see the staff group, I'm asking, just me, to see the staff group separate than families.
Yeah, we can have.
But it doesn't have to be sent to students.
Okay. And so I just wanted to get, so families and staff can do that and have it at the next regular board meeting?
That sounds good.
What does a survey ask?
Well, there are several samples out there through Thought Exchange just that we can model. But I think that the survey would ask, given the current levels, wherever we are that week and, you know, high through CDC, medium through KDAG, and we can track it, I mean, we can wait until Thursday to get it and send it because then it'll be that, do you, should the board make mask optional or change the policy? We can, we can work with our partners at Thought Exchange to clarify. Is that, is that, because it can just be as simple as that, not to overcomplicate it. And so then that'll give you clarity on.
I don't even, in my perception, you don't even have to put the data. Are you comfortable with this Board of Education removing its mask policy? Yes, no, done deal?
I think it's simple.
Simple, one 30-second survey? That's what I was thinking. But if there is some, some other detail that you think.
No, I'm, I'm saying, you, you can frame a question and get any kind of results you want.
Yeah.
You are absolutely right. And my thought is just say, does USD 5, should USD 500 keep the mask policy? Yes, no?
Radio button, yes or no?
Edwin, you got that?
But that still doesn't change the policy that is already established. And we have a process for changing policies. That's the point. You just want more info.
Yeah. If, if there is a way to correlate this, the survey results and what first read or second read policy should come to the board at the next meeting to start to move that cycle along, could we not do that?
Yes, not the next, not the special meeting, but the next.
Yeah, you can't change the special.
Well, yeah, yeah, yeah.
Except for a specific purpose.
But it can be on the first April, I mean, the second April meeting for, with the survey results. And then the board can make a decision based off the results if they are going to adjust at that time.
And can we hear from our medical department?
So the medical department.
When I say that, all I'm saying, all she needs to report, what did the CDC say? What did our health department say? Because that's all she did when she came up here before.
Correct. And so the reason she's not here today, because what they said and what she reported had not changed. So she would have just said the same thing and whether the motion, so that's why she's not here, but.
I get that, but I would have liked for her to have been here if she repeated herself. Because it didn't make sense for us to vote two weeks ago and then we come back and we're voting again. That, to me, is absurd.
I, I respect that. But the only reason she's not here, because the information had not changed and, and we were still acting according to what is current board policy. If it had went to medium or low, we still wouldn't have come back. The board voted that we would follow that. So because none of that changed and she wouldn't have been given new information, it was, that's why she's not here. But she can definitely be here next time and provide the update of whatever, wherever it is.
So I'm going to move us on with our agenda. Thank you. And thank you for Edwin and team to put that survey together. Thank you, Ms. Russell, for that suggestion. And next on the agenda is an added item on our Finance Committee. And I, this would have previously come, so I appreciate your, your patience. So I, with the departure of Dr. Jaeger from the board, who was previously chairing the Finance Committee, and Dr. Nguyen, I don't want to misspeak if this wasn't why you were adding the agenda item. But we wanted to make sure that we reappointed the Finance Committee. It is my recommendation that we appoint Dr. Nguyen as Chair of the Committee and Ms. Clark be a part of that committee and myself as well. And the three of us be, be a part of the Finance Committee. So I, I think that's where you were going with tonight.
We've had this conversation and the point being, when we go to these conferences, many of the people suggest committees. And that, that, that has just been laying idle since January.
Right.
So let's, yet, any of these decisions we make collectively anyway, but we just need to start building our own work teams.
So I would, I would make a motion to name Dr. Nguyen as Chair of the Committee. And do we need a motion to do this or do, can we just?
The motion would be for your, to reconstitute.
Reconstitute the Finance Committee.
Second? We need a second?
Okay, that's the motion, second.
Motion and second. So this is to reconstitute the Finance Committee with the members being?
And adding you.
And adding me to the Finance Committee, correct? Because I would be a new member. There's a motion and, is that a second?
Yes.
Ms. Smith, do you have that language?
She didn't get it.
Okay. So the, the motion would be to reconstitute the Finance Committee and adding myself as a member of the Finance Committee? myself as a member of the finance committee. And it's been seconded. Any questions or discussion? Saying that, I would ask Ms. Smith for a roll call.
So just for clarification, is Dr. Winn the chair of the committee?
Yes.
All right. Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Winn?
Dr. Winn, yes.
Thank you.
Motion passes. Thank you. Before we jump into executive session, and I don't, I wouldn't normally do this, but just on a personal note, you know, I, 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 I just want to say that I sit up here and get beat up quite a bit sometimes, and so, and I try not to take things personally. I really don't, and normally I keep things pretty professional, but when my integrity is being questioned at times, I just want you to know that I do the best that I can in this position, and I will defend our staff the best that I can in this role for our students and for our community. And so, when there's an implication that I'm doing something, maybe not on the up and up, and you're questioning my integrity, and, and I'm not just speaking about tonight, I'm speaking about overall, my integrity matters, and so I would never do anything to, to undermine that, because that's what I hold high. So I don't normally take things personally, especially up here, and maybe I'm just a little emotional these last few weeks, but I just wanted to say that, and that I do the best that I can to serve all of you and to serve us. And, so, yeah, and I will, and I think we have an amazing staff, an amazing leader, who is hiring a great staff, and I will do my part to defend and stand up for our staff, and if I have to take the beatings, I will, and that's okay. But tonight, I just thought I would say and stand up for myself. So with that, Dr. Stubblefield, you can dismiss staff as we are going into executive session.
Staff, with the exception of Ms. Devon, who's a part of the first one of negotiations, are free to go. Thank you.
So I would entertain a motion that the Board of Education recess to executive session for teacher negotiations pursuant to the exception for employer-employee negotiations under the Kansas Open Meetings Act for, for 10 minutes, going in at 9:20.
You're going to just go in.
Yes, going in at 9:25 and coming out at 9:35.
So moved.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Winn?
Edwin, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.[793.54]
Just a second. Okay, Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Rachel Russell?
Dr. Nguyen?
Thank you. We're back in open session now. I entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss the board clerk evaluation pursuant to non-elected personnel exception to coma for 10 minutes going in at 9:37.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Just a second. Okay, Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Thank you. No. Motion to return to open session, please.
So moved.
Second. Second. And Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Thank you. No. Motion to return to open session, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Thank you. No. Motion to return to open session, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now I entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss the superintendent evaluation pursuant to non-elected personnel exception to coma for 10 minutes going in at 9:51.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to return to open session, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Thank you. No. Motion to return to open session, please.
So moved.
Second. Second. And Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to return to open session, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Thank you. No. Motion to return to open session, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Thank you. No. Motion to return to open session, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now I entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss the superintendent evaluation pursuant to non-elected personnel exception to coma for 10 minutes going in at 9:51.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Wanda Brownlee Page?
Wanda Brownlee Page, yes.
Thank you. No. Motion to return to open session, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Smith, roll call.
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now I entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss the superintendent evaluation pursuant to non-elected personnel exception to coma for 10 minutes going in at 9:51.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Yolanda Clark?
Yolanda Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew?
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez?
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell?
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, I don't.
Motion to return to open session, please. So Ms. Smith is not here.
Do you want me?
Go grab her.
Elana Clark.
Motion to return to open session, please.
So moved.
Second.
Thank you. Ms. Smith, roll call.
Elana Clark.
Elana Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now entertain a motion to recess to executive session to discuss the superintendent evaluation pursuant to non-elected personnel exception to coma for 10 minutes going in at 9:51.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Elana Clark.
Elana Clark, yes.
Ms. Drew, Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Motion to return to open session.
So moved.
Second.
Ms. Smith?
Elana Clark.
Elana Clark, yes.
Maxine Drew.
Maxine Drew, yes.
Randy Lopez.
Randy Lopez, yes.
Elana Brownlee Page.
Elana Brownlee Page.
Rachel Russell.
Rachel Russell, yes.
Dr. Nguyen.
Dr. Nguyen, yes.
Thank you.
Thank you. Back in open session again, board. Just a reminder, we do have a board meeting on Friday at 1:00 PM via Zoom, so you'll get the link for that. You'll get information emailed to you tonight if it hasn't already been sent out. The agenda will go live, I believe, tomorrow. We'll have that information. You've got upcoming agenda items on your agenda that you can look at. And... So Ms. Russell?
So I just want to acknowledge that the board has gotten numerous emails. We have continued to push the SPED update past when we were told it would be. Our constituents are frustrated. I am wanting to know if there is any way that we can get an update on what is going on so that it does not feel as though we are out in the dark as well. All of the feedback I have received has been extremely negative, and that's concerning. I don't know what positive direction we are going. I don't know what to do with information I don't know. And so I am urging us to have a response that is not delayed because I think we all have gotten a lot of messages, a lot of social media conversations, and I think to say we're going to wait until almost the end of the school year to get an update, I think it said May 26th, I think that's a little irresponsible. So I am saying publicly that I think we need to hear something, and whether that's a special meeting or whatever, something needs to be said so that it does not feel like we are in the dark, so.
So I will share two things. The regular annual SPED update will not address what you're talking about. It is like the regular IDA stuff that the SPED does. So if there are particular concerns that staff has, and I don't, you know, the things that I've received, we've addressed or talked about. So if you have specifics, we can definitely address that, but it would not necessarily be in a public format if it's about personnel. So if you get specifics, then we can talk about that, but the regular, this is where we are compliance-wise with the state and that kind of stuff is not gonna... If you are seeing stuff on social media, that's not what the SPED report would be, so I just...
So the emails that we are getting from our constituents, all of those have been followed up with, or...
Anything that's come to me.
Okay.
In regards to the things that I've gotten from parents and/or staff through the LEA, I mean, the KNEA, we've addressed. Now, just because it was addressed, people don't necessarily always like the outcome or those kind of things. So I think if there are specific things, like tonight when the person spoke about the early childhood situation, I can go back and specifically see what is happening around that, or where the disconnect is. But if it's just general, it's bad, I don't know what to do with that information if they're not specifics. I... Dr. Robinson from KU and I do have a meeting next Tuesday to talk about what was gathered for there from the report from KU and the recommendations specifically for SPED. And when KU finishes their final report, which they think they have until the end of the month, you will see all those recommendations, and then we would talk about the implementation plan. But moving the SPED report up is very different than addressing that because that's more about compliance and just regularly, like, what the state requires of our own compliance and where we are. It's not about... Depending on what the questions are.
Okay.
So if there needs to be a... If you have specifics, we can talk about it, and we can walk through what that looks like, yeah.
Yeah. And I... What I will do is, you know, I typically will at least acknowledge that the email has come in, right? And then I will send those off to Dr. Stubblefield so that she can then address any complaints or whatever the case might be so that she's aware. And so I would just make sure that we're doing the same thing.
Okay. I just want to acknowledge, I don't know that I, as a board member, have ever seen anyone respond, and probably because of coma and all of those things, but I also just want to make sure that people don't feel like they're being ignored either, so.
One of the things you can't, one of the things you can do without creating a coma issue or without departing from the process is do as Mr. Lopez is suggesting, acknowledge that you got the email and indicate that you're going to forward it to the superintendent to address it. And then if you think the board needs to address it, then that's something that the board does.
Appreciate that clarification. Thank you.
Thank you for bringing that. Anything else? Alrighty, this meeting is adjourned. Thank you all.